Here we go.
The cabinet's turned on the no-speak side.
So, good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the May the 4th Town Council Meeting in the town of Fairfax and we will begin at 7:05 with roll call. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilmember Weinshof?
Here.
Councilmember Kohler?
Here.
Councilmember Lacks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Goddard?
Here.
Everybody's here.
Okay, and let's continue with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, I would like to dedicate this Town Council Meeting to some very, very special people and those are our public servants, of which we are also, and many of you out in the group right now as well. So this is the week of public service recognition. So it just happens that we have a council meeting. So if you've never heard of that, it's true because some kind person put it in the editorials of the IJ this morning amidst all of the other sort of flaring, angry-type things that we read in our editorials that he is continually grateful for the commitment and dedication of my colleagues in federal, state, and local service. And this week, it's especially important to say thank you because it's Public Service Recognition Week. I didn't know before reading that this morning. So what I chose to do tonight is just quickly to call out those in public service who happen to be our Public Works Department. So I hope they're listening. I will take two minutes of your time. So our Public Works Department responsibilities. They have the overall responsibility for the development and implementation of the town's capital improvement program, the maintenance of the street lighting and traffic signals, maintenance and repair of the town's buildings and facilities, park maintenance, and management of the storm water pollution prevention program. But our Public Works guys not only hand-sweep the bike lanes, guard the compost, deal with poison oak at the flashing beacons so the children don't get poison oak as they try to cross the road, love-nourish and groom Controti Field, they shop and play locally, they trim back the branches, they clear storm drains, they restock paper towels, they respond 24/7 to blocked storm drains, they set up the chairs you're sitting on, they watch the council meetings, I'm told, they install bike racks, and they are the character and the characters of this town. So this meeting is dedicated in gratitude to our Public Works and our public service employees and volunteers. Okay, moving on. So we are looking at the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you had a comment. What I'm going to move, we do, is take the workshop, which is number 10 on our agenda, and move it to the end of the agenda. So we'll be going through open time and then presentations, the consent calendar, the two regular agenda meeting items, which are number 11 and 12, and then we will conduct the workshop.
I've actually asked a number of people to come for the workshop and I think this is an important thing for the town. So I feel it's important to keep the workshop before the regular agenda.
So the rationale behind that was that we put the time of the workshop out on Nextdoor so that we could notify a larger number of the public. And we said that we were going to conduct the workshop approximately 8:30. So this is why we've done this.
And perhaps the other thing was, we thought that perhaps the Bound Council and our financial advisor, as well as the Parisi associates, may not want to stay for the work. I mean, we'd have to keep them around while we did the workshop. And the thought pattern of saying a time approximately of 8:30 is, we were hoping that we'd be able to complete all items then prior to 8:30 or that timeframe. But I think you have flexibility that you can modify the agenda as you move through and you see things are quicker, things are shorter, you can actually ask who's here for what items. That might help you in terms of determining how you want to modify the agenda.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think that would work because I think it's a little optimistic to think we could get through everything before 8:30. So it'd be better if we were a little more flexible.
Okay, that sounds good. So can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, so motion Kohler, second Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So with that, we move right into open time for public comment.
Do you want to do the announcements or read the protocol?
Oh, I would like to do that. Thank you, Barbara. So the announcements. Move this binder around. So the Fairfax Food Pantry, which is every Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Community Church, which is on the corner of Oak Manor and Sir Francis Drake, is open. It's open every Saturday. It's open to everyone. Please feel free to use it should you have a need to use it. And they always need volunteers. We will be conducting a budget workshop on May the 20th in the Women's Club from 9:00 to 1:00. There will be a Perry Park cleanup day on May 21st from 9:00 to noon. And it's an opportunity to help rake the park and spread sand in the playground and just generally maintain this beautiful community resource. Fairfax Festival is coming Saturday and Sunday, June 11th and 12th. It's 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the parade starts at 10:00 on Saturday. We have vacancies on boards and commissions. We have two on Open Space Committee, one on the General Plan Implementation Committee, three on the Volunteer Board. And the applications are available at Town Hall and on the Town website. And you can contact the Town Clerk for any information that you might want. And Barbara, you had a couple.
Yeah, you might just want to report out on closed session first.
Thank you. And I skipped a very important step, which is to report out from closed session that we have directed our legal counsel. And that's what we did. Yes. Yes, exactly. And moving on to two more announcements.
Okay, well, thank you, Renee. Sorry for the interruption. Okay, so I want to also talk about the Marin Clean Energy Deep Green Incentive Program. We launched that on February 26th. And for 100 new deep green customers, they will receive a $5 credit each month for one year. And deep green is 100% renewable energy. And the $5 credit per month, per year, is roughly the cost of deep green versus the light green Marin Clean Energy Program. And as of April 28th, we had 53 new deep green signups. So that means there's 47 more available. And I just also want to report that since we started the incentive program, Fairfax now has the highest deep green signups for all cities and towns and the counties that are enrolled in Marin Clean Energy.
Excellent.
And thank you. And then one more thing on Nextdoor. Our Chief of Police puts out a lot of really important announcements on Nextdoors and our Town Manager is also using it frequently. And our Chief reports to me that only about half of our residents are on Nextdoor. So it's clearly up to everybody if they decide it's something they're interested in. But we do try to push out information. We cannot review other things on Nextdoor. So if more people sign up, we can help get more information out. So I just want to bring that up. Thank you.
And David?
Yeah, two things. One, unfortunate, and one terrific. Let's do the bad one first. If you're running for public office, we have ordinances which specifically provide that you are not to put your signs, your campaign signs, in our rights of way. And yet, anyone who's scrolling through town will see that this is not being followed strictly. And it's particularly distressing that people who are running for a judgeship would find the inability to comply with local ordinances. I'm sure that when somebody comes to them with a speeding ticket down the road, the response won't be "bye." So, a word to the wise. This also takes time from our Town Clerk, who has to contact all of these folks and tell them to pick up their signs and stop doing it, and our town employees that we just praised for having to waste their time running around town picking these things up. So a word to the wise should be sufficient. Stop it. On a more enjoyable note, as folks may know, the Chronicle, every year, Chronicles, the top 100 restaurants, in the opinion of them, in the entire San Francisco Bay Area. And we're in there. Village Sake is listed as one of the 100 best restaurants. And this is the entire Bay Area. So a shout-out goes out to Fairfax firefighter Scott Porter, who is a co-owner of this. But particularly, if I may just quote one line that would never be said about my house. "The kitchen has a way with vegetables that might include curried spaghetti squash hit with lime and ginger." If I want that, I have to go to Village Sake. And we congratulate them, I'm sure, for their good fortune so quickly. And we wish them the greatest of good luck. And we somewhat lightly admonished the Chronicle to also stop in at all of our other restaurants and suggest that they may want to include them in the upcoming edition. Thank you.
Okay, I have one last announcement. And that is that tomorrow night at White Hill Middle School, there will be a screening of a new full-length documentary called Screenagers. This addresses probably one of the most critical issues of our time, especially as parents, and that is the addiction that we seem to all be acquiring to screen time. And it addresses this in the frame of a developing self. So White Hill Middle School tomorrow night, you can purchase a ticket at the door. I highly recommend it. It's being asked for and booked all over the world right now. This is co-produced by a local mom here in Fairfax. And moving on, now we're going to go to open time for public comment, public expression. And if you wish to address the council, please approach the podium and state your name and address, if you're comfortable doing so. You will have three minutes to talk. I would encourage and strongly request that people keep to your three-minute time, remembering that everybody has the same three minutes, and so that we don't have to cut you off, which is always a terrible thing to do. And open time is for matters that are not listed on the agenda. So with that, our first public comment.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jody Timms from Cascade Drive. And on behalf of the Commission on Aging, as your Town Representative, I wanted to give you just a quick update on what seniors and the Commission have been up to in the town of Fairfax, for yourselves to know about, and also any listeners who might be at home. Tomorrow, in lieu of the regular Commission on Aging meeting, there is our 12th Annual Healthy Aging Symposium that will be at Embassy Suites from 9:00 to 1:00. It's a great conference that's held every year, so I brought a few flyers for that, in case anybody's interested. There'll be some great speakers and it should be a good time. Also, tomorrow, similar time, actually in conflict with it, but Ross Valley Seniors, which is the local group that meets every month in collaboration with Santa Anselmo, is a great lunchtime and programs for seniors. Tomorrow, they're having a high tea celebrating Mother's Day at 11:00 o'clock here in the Fairfax Women's Club. So I encourage seniors to think about going to that. Also, at the library on May 17th, there'll be a talk on maximizing your memory. So that's probably something we all could use. Anyway, that'll be there Tuesday at 10:00 o'clock. And then also, just to report that the Age Friendly Task Force for Fairfax has been meeting monthly and making slow but steady progress. We are having a retreat in two weeks on a Saturday to continue to work on our document that we need to get back to the World Health Organization in a timely way toward the end of the year. So we're making progress there. We're also waiting sort of on our final word, I think, for the $5,000 grant, mini-grant from Marin Community Foundation and the county in support of age-friendly activities and events and planning that we want to, and that we are doing and more that we want to be doing. And also, we are going to be working closely with Ross Valley Village of Marin Villages to help support seniors aging at home and having the kind of help and support that they need to do that carefully and safely. So I think that's all. Just wanted to touch base and let you know I'm out there doing my thing on behalf of our town. Thanks.
And it's so appreciated. Thank you, Jody, very much. Any more public comment? Open time. Wendy?
Hi, I'm Wendy Botwen and I live in Fairfax. And I know you all know me from a lot of things. I am here today because I'm getting really overly concerned and it's now hit me personally, the whole housing crisis that's going on. And I know that, I know the town's doing things about it, but it's really been a lot of talk and I don't really know what's going on. And I don't know if this is completely out of line, but I'm wondering if there's any way that the town of Fairfax could declare some kind of a housing state of emergency and take it seriously. I know that Oakland passed a 90-day moratorium to stop rents from being raised and evictions. And I want to see Fairfax. I want to see Fairfax doing something serious like that. So, thanks.
Thanks, Wendy. Just rest assured that we, it's in our ears and our eyes and our hearts. Just know that it will be discussed going forward.
Hi, my name's Gabriel Cordy, 30 Cypress Road. I grew up in Point Reyes in Fairfax. My brother's Jonathan Cordy. We're both musicians and artists. And we, growing up in Point Reyes, we had a local taqueria called just the Taqueria. And it was a place where the whole community would go. Lots of families. It was affordable. And it was definitely a hub for the community. And that closed down because of the market of tourism. And what replaced it was a very fancy restaurant that really caters just to wealthy weekenders, people that own second homes, or to tourists. And now, I've heard that my favorite taco shop, Casa Manana, is actually getting evicted. And it does seem that it's not a situation where Josiah was late on rent or did anything wrong. It's actually something of a capitalist move, a deal with his neighbor, the chiropractor, to expand that guy's business. And it's moving out the Health Center and Josiah. I think both of those businesses, the Health Center and Josiah, are really crucial businesses to Fairfax. It reminds me of the taqueria that I grew up with. And I think about that every time I walk by. I never eat at this place because it is out of my pocket, you know, it's out of my range. It is a shame to see that he's only been given 60 days to find a new business place, which, you know, was, it was just brought up about a housing crisis. It is just a general space crisis. And it is completely impossible for him to move, especially a business with a kitchen. It's a different story than just a storefront. There is a large number of people at Casa Manana right now gathering to write polite letters to the landlord in protest of this move or to give Josiah more time to move. Because he's not going to be able, his business won't be able to survive, let alone the fact that we're losing a very valid and crucial business to the spirit of Fairfax. And I know that there's things in place to avoid chain stores into Fairfax. And I would love to see, I know that this might be out of the council's hands, but something to protect local business owners, especially one that's been here for almost 20 years and who has, you know, been in good standing for 20 years as well. I guess the only thing I could say or ask would be for advice on what we can do. We're talking about getting a petition just to get signatures, whether it's a moral petition or, you know, something official. I don't, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know exactly how to help in that way. But there is a large number of people that are extremely concerned with the gentrification of Fairfax. And I would hate to see more businesses like Josiah, Culture Shock, the Chinese restaurant, that was, that was a raised rent situation as well. So I'm just getting up here to express my deep concern with the change of culture in Fairfax. It is a home for me and my brother and his kids and stuff. I get them gift certificates for Casa Manana, which Josiah writes on a brown paper bag and draws colorfully on them. So anyways, that's my three minutes, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Sierra Salin. I'm kind of all over the map. And I want to second what he said about Culture Shock and also Szechuan Chef, which I really liked. And David, to your point, it's a great restaurant. And what about Szechuan Chef? I mean, we've got all the new Teslas and Beamers and other things moving in to take all the shiny new stuff. And I haven't eaten at the new sushi place because it's kind of hard in the pocketbook. But, you know, I'm kind of an old anachronism or something and probably do to move out myself one of these days. So a few things. One is, a bunch of things, actually. Screenagers and Nextdoor. Hey, Nextdoor's great. We're human e-beings. We don't even need bodies. We don't need to know our neighbors physically and for real. We just go and tune into our little computers and everything and make reservations and do everything online. And we don't even know our neighbors. And I'm kind of mixed on Nextdoor. But Screenagers is a great thing. I wanted to say something about the Chevron, which I now have some kind of restraining order or something on for going in and trying to talk to the guy working on it and asking, "Well, what are you guys doing and what's happening with where the town property is, which is about 30 feet of it? And just curious what you guys are doing because I haven't seen or heard anything." And rather than talking to me and answering my question, he said, "I'm going to get a restraining order. You can get off the property." And I'd like to suggest that the town move the fence so that people can visually see where the town property actually is, which is now kind of the asphalt and a good part of what's fenced off. And whether, what it has that business actually uses that space and has access to it, isn't really the point to the question. I mean, it could be really nice, whatever they do with it. But, and, I just want the town and people to know it is town property and possibly we could envision and do something else with it. Possibly, we dig up the asphalt and have more of a catch swales and water retention and water into the groundwater. And possibly, it's too toxic from whatever the plume is underneath. They're going everywhere. Possibly, we could have a biker or other campground for people coming through or homeless. Or possibly, we could have like a little memorial park for Jordy Prom who died recently after a motorcycle crash, which some people know is just another Fairfax character, which a lot of people are going to miss. And for the healthy community on aging, I like that. And I kind of just go, "Healthy aging," and I just kind of go, huh, yeah. I mean, I broke, had, broke my leg recently and kind of walking out with this. And it's kind of like, yeah, I can see how it's kind of like things slow down. I'm not going to be able to run up and downstairs when I'm 90. But for Mother's Day, I just want to say something about my mother. Couple of things. One is, when she was in her 80s, she'd look at me and she'd say, "Don't get old." And, you know, half her teeth were falling out, but her eyes were like sparkling like little universes. And I just kind of go, "Well, what are my options, Mom?" It's like, so, and some of us check out early, like Jordy, who is 41. But the other thing she said, which I'll put out for Mother's Day, is whenever you lose someone, go out and make two new friends. And as she got older, she added to that, "Go ahead and make two new friends who are younger than you are." So go ahead and make some new young friends and hang out with the youth and hang out with young folk. And, you know, we're all stuck in our heads. Go hang out with young folks. They know what's going on. And they're stressed. And they're stressed. And, you know, I've also, I'm involved with the schools and healthy community and wellness. I know I'm going on. But I just want to say, talk to the kids. Academics isn't everything. And we put all our baskets into academics and paying for schools or facilities and teachers. And we discount and dismiss the costs for social, emotional to society and to health and wellness. And it doesn't pencil out. And we got to do something and support that.
Thanks, Sierra, very much. Before we, do we have any other open time comment? Please come forward.
I'll be quick. My name's Todd Greenberg. I live downtown here on Bolinas. And I'd like to third and hopefully make the council aware that there's a lot of other people, as Gabe indicated, that are very concerned about the loss of a community gathering spot, Casa Manana, that a lot of people enjoy. And again, what change that means. I think I understand, we all understand, that a building owner has rights. And we are more or less in a capitalist society. But there is some question regarding what zoning allows there. And the clock is ticking on this beloved business owner. That is another restaurant that we all, many people like. If there's something that can be done, I think a lot of people are concerned and aren't aware of these meetings. And that brings me to my second point. I'm wondering what can be done to increase the attendance at these meetings, whether, all medium, whether it's electronic, whether there could be other posting areas, or whatever ideas there might be. It seems like there might be many more people interested in making comments.
Okay, great. And if you have any suggestions about how to do more bringing the public to the meetings, please share them with us. It's always a, it's a, it's a goal. And we work very hard at doing it. So bring your ideas.
My immediate thought would be some kind of posting downtown, directly downtown at the corner of Bolinas.
Okay. Anyone, if you talk to people and they want to send suggestions, please send them. Okay. And Kiki?
Good evening, council members and staff. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming out again. I have a few quick items, several quick items. One of them is I'd like to endorse the comments that have been made tonight about the loss of affordable housing. And I would like to recommend to all of us in this room and all of us watching on television, and especially to you council members, to visit the website for Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. That's marinmech.org. We are running an information campaign to let people in Marin County understand both the facts and the data about the influx of commuters to work in our businesses and the loss of affordable housing in our, in our community, and the implications of that. That's number one. Number two, with regard to the MCE Deep Green Subsidy that Barbara mentioned, on behalf of the town's Fairfax's Climate Action Committee, I want to take some credit for bringing that project to our town and for tabling and for spreading the word and working with Marin Clean Energy to make sure that we get deep green, which is the biggest hit, the biggest bang for the buck in terms of renewable energy for Marin Clean Energy and our county. Thirdly, I have an ill family member at home, so I won't be able to stay for the workshop. But Barbara, I wanted to respond to you and to the council and let you know that I personally support Measure D, the renewal of the sales tax. And fourthly, last week, I'm on the board of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce. And we had a lengthy discussion about the issues of the Flood Zone 9 deliberations and studies and research regarding the potential for a detention basin at Lefty Gomez. Gomez Field. And I wanted to share with you the resolution that was passed that evening, last Thursday evening.
Okay. Kiki, time-wise, can you, can you?
It's, it's very short.
Okay.
Thank you. Be it so moved that the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce supports Flood Zone 9 Board efforts to further the flood control planning process that includes the potential for Lefty Gomez Field to be used as a flood detention basin and all other options to mitigate flooding in order to protect downtown Fairfax municipal services, businesses, and residences. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to take you back to December, 1982. Uh, leading up to January 3rd, there was 10 inches of rain that fell on this, in this, in our community. On January 3rd, five inches fell. On January 4th, six inches fell. Three people died during that storm event and that was what a hundred-year flood looks like. And in 2005, we had another event of similar magnitude. And from that event, this good council went on a three-year, uh, consultation with the community. And I've had the, the great good fortune of reading the exquisite work that the Fairfax Flood Mitigation Plan, uh, ni, 2008, uh, had to offer. And much of its information is so terror, is so extraordinarily relevant today in, um, the Ross Valley Zone, uh, District 9 flood plan. And I think what's critically important to look at that plan and go back and revisit. And it made very clear that in order to move from where we are to get a five-year, 20-year, a 20-year safe zone was to, was to clean the channels. And so that the flood that happened in 2012 was a 20-year flood. And perhaps if the channels would clean by then, then the flood would not have taken out our center town in the floods that we had in 2012. But what I found of extremely insightful was that in order to take it from that 20-year level up to the 100-year level that we seek to find protection from now, the only recommendation within that plan was for construction of detention basins. And I think it's the order of magnitude that we need to understand. Clean canals will give you 20 years and a 20-year flood. The detention basin in that plan with its, with its work said that the next 80 years to get to that 100-year proverbial, uh, flood plane, it required detention basins. And I, I believe that, uh, there's been so much disinformation. Uh, and I, I'm very proud of the Chamber of Commerce and their stand. And I think at this point in time, any attempt to take any option that we have off the table, it's like sending a fireman to a fire and saying, oh, excuse me, you can't use a hose. The detention basin and the detention basins, the thousands of detention basins across this country are a, a fundamental toolkit for flood mitigation. Uh, and I, um, I'm, we'll be speaking further on this and I think it's very important for this council to bring forward their plan so that more people understand that it was the beginning of the Ross Valley Zone 9 and we have a lot to learn. But we, but together, in a Fairfaxian way, without contention, without politicizing it, we can find a solution. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Um, any other open time, public expression? Um, seeing none, I would like to ask actually, um, before we move forward, that we, uh, plan to re, re, uh, resurrect our Affordable Housing Committee, um, which has not met for, um, I don't know when, when was the last meeting? Do you, do you recall?
Right, it's been a while.
Okay. So I think it would be to reconvene the Affordable Housing Committee and to, um, start a discussion. And I would ask that staff come back with some ideas for how that discussion might proceed to deal with some of what, uh, people have raised and that we're all, I'm sure, hearing around town is going on. And as we hear, there are not only confusion, there's not only confusion and, and fear around what's actually happening, but there's also sort of this confusion about, so how do we proceed? Who do we talk to? How do we get the facts? And I think it's important that we start to address that going forward. And it may start with the Affordable Housing Committee. Um, and then I would like to see a plan that we can, uh, go forward with. Thank you. So, yes, John?
It is a little unrelated, but perhaps quite related also. I mean, one of the things that we're hearing a lot of tonight is, you know, about how our downtown businesses and the core of the community that that represents and serves, um, you know, and if, it's not housing, but it's certainly, um, affected by economics and, you know, it would be good to explore some possibilities. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, next on the agenda is our, uh, presentation. And who are our presenters?
Grace Dorante.
Ah, hi. So this is, um, I'm sorry, what is?
Grace Dorante.
So this is Grace Dorante. Uh, welcome from the, um, Rising Sun Energy Center. And, uh, we're going to be learning about, uh, water conservation and energy efficiency home visits. So thanks for coming.
I can, well, thank you for the introduction. Um, thank you to the council for the opportunity, especially to council member Barbara Coler and the, uh, Fairfax Climate Action Committee for the opportunity to share what my organization does. And so I'll start a little bit, uh, so Rising Sun Energy Center, uh, we're located in Berkeley, but during the summer, we set up 20 different summer sites, offices, uh, to service 20 different cities through the Bay Area. And, uh, our mission is to empower individuals, uh, to achieve environmental and economic sustainability for themselves and for the community. Um, so our, um, no, no, you're fine. I'll wait so everybody can see.
Well, they're getting it set up, but just keep going. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, the Climate Action Committee, which I'm a member of, we're really excited about Rising Sun, who will come out and come to your house and install some energy efficiency upgrades. And, um, I think Grace mentioned at our Climate Action Committee that they have a certain number they can accomplish. They do it in July, but they're signing up now. And, um, we would like to get all those here.
Yeah, absolutely. Me too. And I'll, I'll get to what you guys can do to help us. So, okay, I was sort of talking about, I saw where Rising Sun's flagship program is California Youth Energy Services, or CYE as the way we call it. So. So what does CYE does? We provide no-cost energy and water conservation services for Marin County residents. Like I said, we're also in 20 different cities, but, uh, here our agreement is with the whole county. So we not only serve Fairfax, but all the other cities within Marin. Then we provide, uh, through partnership with PG&E, no, no, you're fine, uh, with Marin County and the local water districts, this service. And these services, it's important to highlight that it's for homeowners, but also for renters and regardless of income. And, um, it helps cities reach their climate action, uh, plan targets, uh, to do their part also to address the California drought. Okay. So our service is called the Green House Call. What is the Green House Call? It's a, uh, we provide energy and water efficiency assessments and we install different kinds of energy and water-saving equipment. We have in Marin County, we give up to four LED light bulbs and as many CFLs as people need in case they have any incandescents. And then we have a smart power strips, showerheads, bathroom and kitchen sinkerators. We provide the E-Ways pickup and recycling service and, as well as, but, uh, basic solar assessments for homeowners. And way more, but this is, uh, what I could fit in the presentation today. Um, and we also give person, uh, personalized recommendations at the end of each visit. Uh, every person will receive a report to their email address with everything that we install and also any other programs that can help them fix some issues at their homes. Yes, thank you. So in Fairfax during 2015, we, well, in Marin County, we employ a total of 18 youth. That's one of the things I, I also wanted to let you know. Uh, we hire youth, 15 to 22 years old, from the actual cities that we service to, uh, to provide this service to all residents. So last year, we hired 18 youth in the whole county. And we serve from, uh, the over 600 homes that we service in Marin County, 45 were for Fairfax residents. And we install energy and water-saving devices that led to the annual reduction of 7,332 kilowatt hour, 92 therms, and on 141,000 gallons of water. That only for Fairfax, right? So this prevented 5.5 metric tons of CO2 for entering the atmosphere, which is equivalent to CO2 greenhouse, uh, emissions from one of the following. Let's say 24 gallons of gasoline consumed or 30, 13 barrels of oil or the, um, one home's electricity used for a whole year. Thanks. So what can you do as a council to help us and to help our mission? One of the things is lead by example. Sign up to receive a Green House Call. I'm sure that you guys are pretty efficient already, but it never hurts to, you know, have a check at your home and receive some of the, uh, measures that we install. And then also promote, uh, our program through your networks, uh, refer coworkers, family members, neighbors. I, I heard just a few minutes ago, you guys mentioned, um, Nextdoor. That's a great opportunity and great tool for us to, uh, promote our program, especially coming from you guys that have, you know, definitely a strong voice in the community. And as the city council, one of the things that we wanna, uh, propose is to set, uh, for you guys to set a target number of homes that you wanna reach, um, that you want us to service here in Fairfax. And I, we can work together, um, the Regional Outreach Manager in Marin County for Rising Sun. And so we can figure some strategies to apply to the outreach that we've been doing. Like Barbara said, we started the outreach already, uh, back in February and the service runs July 6th to August 11th. And, but we are still looking for residents to sign up and, um, yep. Also, if you have any questions, I don't know if there's, um, any time right now? No, no, I'm saying, that is the next one, sorry. Uh, but also here's all my information. You can reach me, uh, my phone number at the office and also to my email address.
You have a question?
Yes.
I think I'm not the only person who has this dilemma. We have solar on the roof, live on a cliff, I'm not climbing up there. Um, it's dirty.
Okay.
I have no idea and I have tried to find somebody because, you know, your run-of-the-mill, um, window cleaner, not gonna get on the roof. Um, I think I'm probably losing some X percent. Um, I don't know if you maintain lists. I don't know if that's a service you provide.
I, well, the services that we provide are kinda basic, but you have, because you have to remember that who we hire are youth to do these assessments. So we definitely don't want them to climbing up your roof or messing with your solar panels. But, um, one of the things that we do is during the report, we send you links to different, uh, to all the organizations and even other programs that can help you. I'm not sure if we've, um, shared information about that before, but, um, we have different partners in all the counties and cities that we work, so I'm sure we could figure something out.
All of these solar systems, which are now go, and you can imagine, it doesn't take much to knock down 10% of this thing. Just a couple of bad birds having a bad day and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and pollen as well. And of course, we don't get the rain, so you can imagine, uh, this stuff just builds up. So to me, if I was looking in my personal circumstance for a way to enhance, that would be one.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
David?
You're gonna do it?
No, I said, I also have solar panels on my roof and I went and asked somebody, Bert Barch, who is.
Wouldn't do it. Asked him, he wouldn't do it.
Yeah, I know. And I asked him, he, he said, well, tell you what, but I, here's how you do it. And he told me how, you climb up on your roof, you get the brush and it's got a hose going to the brush. And he gave me his old one, which is pretty leaky.
John, 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 you're on the flats on scenic. I'm like 75 or 100 feet up in the.
You guys should take this offline. You can hire John.
Yeah, we can take it. You don't wanna hire me, but, um, anyway, and when I cleaned those panels, it went up by about 400 watts. Okay? So which is, uh, over 10%. So.
So I, I just have a suggestion. Grace, if you can leave some of the flyers.
Sure.
With our town clerk, Michelle, and potentially maybe we can do a link to your website off our website.
That'd be great. Yeah, Marin County has one already, so I encourage you guys.
Well, but people don't, people come to our website.
No, 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 I'm saying, yeah, absolutely. Like I encourage you guys to do so. We have all the materials already, ready, uh, to be posted.
Right.
Grace, would you work with, um, any small businesses?
Unfortunately, no. Our services are residential only.
Okay. And the funding comes from?
So the funding comes from PG&E and from the cities, in this case, the county, actually. That's the reason why Marin County receives up to four LEDs. All of our, all their cities receive just one because Marin County pay extra into the program. Uh, also the water districts, MMWD and NWD are the ones who donate the water measures that we install. And, uh, like I said, PG&E, you know, you guys know, um, it's obligated by the CPUC to, um, give funding to organizations and programs like ours to save, to help California residents save energy. So that's basically how, how it works.
Great. Okay.
Mayor?
Question?
I was one of the 45 people last year.
Oh, great.
And I would like to testify here in public that.
Thank you.
It was great. I mean, it was very informative. Uh, the light bulbs are great. And, um, and we could take actions later on after the, the tour that also saved energy. And, uh, you asked for a goal, how about, uh, you was 45 last year, how about 100 this year?
Please.
And if the people listening to this in the community can help.
Yep.
Meet that goal, that's great.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, just quickly, so, uh, the Climate Action Committee has asked Grace to table with us and she wasn't able to make the last one, which was Earth Day and she had many other things. So we'll be doing that, but also suggestion is consider tabling at the farmer's market, which is now happening. And I know you guys did that last year.
Yeah, we've done, uh, both markets, the Sunday and the Wednesday market. Unfortunately, sometimes, and that's why I'm, I'm, I'm coming here to speak to you, that you already, um, know the community. Uh, for some reason, people don't take free very well, uh, you know, cause this service has no cost at all, it's already covered. Uh, and we haven't been really successful on markets. So I think maybe if it comes from, from you, that you already have representation in the community, might be a little bit easier.
Sure. And, um, don't forget the EcoFest coming up on June 11th.
Yes, we already signed up to participate there, yes.
Excellent. Uh, well, I hope to be one of the 100 people. I will be one of the 100 people and do a, to get a home audit. Um, and did I hear you right? You said this is also available for renters?
Yes, absolutely.
Which is great because of, you know, a lot of.
Yeah, it's one of the few programs that it's not income-based and it's also available for renters.
And also, if you could repeat your contact information for people that are listening at home, they may not be able to see that, that would be helpful.
Sure. My name is Grace Dorant. I'm the Regional Outreach Manager for, uh, Marin County. My email is D S and Diana, U R S and Robert, A N S and Nancy, T S and Tom, E at RisingSunEnergy.org. And my phone number is 510-665-1501, extension 308. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, just one more thing, you guys can sign up to that phone number, but extension five and also to our website, RisingSunEnergy.org. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Grace.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, so moving on to the consent calendar, um, does anyone have any questions or?
I have one item I was hoping we could pull because I have a few questions on it and that is the, um, item one, the audited financial statements. Maybe we could do it right at the end, um, cause it's not gonna take too long.
Okay, anybody else? I had one minor correction on the minutes. So, um, in, uh, let's see, where are we? Um, so on page four of the minutes, it says that, um, I assisted with the White Hill Middle School composing program. Just so there's no confusion later that I'm not a composer, composting. Just, just for the record.
I had another council member mention that. Thank you. I guess it was a Freudian slip.
Okay, cool. Um, okay, so moving on, any other, would anyone like to make a motion around?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent order with, uh, consent calendar with the exception of item two, which we're pulling and the change in the minutes.
It may be, Madam Mayor, a public comment on the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Any public comment on consent? Seeing none, thank you. Yes, it's implied.
So I'd like to make the, repeat the motion.
Yes. And a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have, um, motion Coler and second Lax, um, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The motion passes. So let's move on to item one on consent, which is no longer on consent.
I guess it's item two, but, uh, just, um, I think my question is, first of all, I read everything and also met with our finance director. It was a great report and very informative, but it strikes me that GASP, 68 and 71. But it strikes me that GASP 68 and 71, because it's new information about what's perceived as pension liability, may have significant impacts for cities. So would you mind explaining, Catherine, if you could explain briefly about the impact of GASP 68 and 71 on cities, and kind of what the makeup is? That would be helpful.
So, before we start, though, might I ask Michael Vavret, our finance director, to lead us off here?
I did prepare some comments that includes addressing that a little bit.
Great.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like her to address that, that's fine, but I did prepare some.
Okay, when you and I spoke, you mentioned that it might be good to ask her, but I'm happy to have you do it.
Okay, well, I, we got the, thank you, Catherine, I'm gonna go ahead and--
You're welcome.
--address that here. I did do a staff report that addressed the financial statements, but I did want to expand on a little bit more since I had the opportunity with this. And I just wanted to say that the audit for the financial statements is performed every year in accordance, by an independent audit firm in accordance with the state law. And our audit that we're looking at tonight is for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2015. And the fieldwork for this started on December 28th, and auditors were here for a couple of weeks, and they completed the audit on August, on April 18th. And this last week, the finance committee reviewed the statements at their periodic meeting. The reports for this year are clean, that means without exception. And the magic phrase that's sought by all who go through this process is that, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above fairly present all, in all material respects, the respective financial position of government activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the town as of June 15, June 30, 2015, and the respective changes in financial position listed as part of the basic financial statements for the year ended in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. That said, that these financial statements tell a different story than last year's statements did. Townwide, our revenues exceeded expenses by $294,000, even though the revenues were 6.5% less than they were the prior year, and expenses decreased by a little more than a percent. And so that's a good thing. The general fund was basically, basically broke even, increasing its fund balance by That's respectable, although we anticipated having a higher carryforward balance when we prepared this year's budget, and that may be due to the timing of reimbursements of capital projects and stuff. Last year, we ended June 30, 2014, with townwide ending fund balance of $4,081,000. So we had a positive balance at the end of last year, of $4,081,000. But this year, that ending fund balance was restated, so now it's negative $1,958,000. So we now have a negative fund balance for the city. That's $639,000 lower, and that's disturbing. And so what I wanted to do was say that, kind of sort of explain what happened. Basically, the accounting rules changed on us, and we had to implement GASP 68. You'll hear a lot about this thing. This is the first year that we had to do an implementation of GASP 68, which affects the town's financial statements. But it's not just us, GASP 68 affects every government entity in Marin County, in California, and in fact, in all the United States. So let me explain about GASP 68. GASP is the Government Accounting Standards Board, and that's the group that writes all the accounting rules that governments must use in presenting their financial statements. Prior to this new rule, GASP 68, municipalities did not have to report their unfunded liabilities from cost-sharing plans like PERS on their financial statements. But that doesn't mean that we didn't disclose them. In fact, in last year's audit, we have six pages of notes to the financial statements which disclosed that the town had an unfunded pension liability, which we refer to as the side fund, of $1,695,000. That was based on actuarial calculations made by PERS under the GASP rules that were in place at the time. So GASP made rules, GASP 25, which said how you were going to calculate and present the financial information. And they were presented in footnotes according to the rules that GASP had. But GASP rewrote the rules in 2012, I think it was, wasn't it? And they basically decided that it's appropriate for pension liabilities to be shown on the balance sheet, not just in the financial notes. And they didn't change the actual pension expense that we have to pay. It only affects the pension liabilities and the accrued expenses that are reported on the financial statements. And they tightened the way that pension liability is calculated also. The increase of our liability from $1,696,000, which was the balance of our side fund at June 30, 2014, up to $6,039,000 is because the actuarial assumptions and the method used to value the investment assets that are used in the calculation. Those things have changed. So just as an oversight, PERS pensions are funded 12% from member contributions, so the employees themselves contribute 12%. And then the employers contribute 21%. So together, those, that's about 33%, about one-third of what is in CalPERS is funded by the employer and the employees. The other 67% is from investment earnings. And these earnings are based on the billions of dollars that CalPERS has invested in stocks and bonds and a broad array of different assets. CalPERS is the biggest public pension plan in the United States. And our pension balance has always been assumed on these earnings to be 7.5% per year. That's what they used in their assumptions to come up with a side fund balance of $2, 000, or $1,696,000. The new, the new rules require that the pension liability, which is now called the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, be calculated as the difference between the assets at market value and the actuarial determined current liability as of a certain point in time. This year, it was as of June 30, 2014. So if the market underperforms these actuarial assumptions, then the unfunded liabilities increase. And higher unfunded liabilities cause higher annual liability reduction payments. This means basically that if the investments go up or down, our pension liability is affected. This wasn't the case before. So the rules, the change in these rules is a good thing. GASP is attempting to promote discussion within the government and in the public by enhancing the transparency. And the financial statements will now show the town's share of pension liabilities, which has always been there, but never shown on the financial statements. So, that basically concludes my comments. And Catherine, you're on of Mays and Associates, she's our audit partner, is here, and she's with Whitney Crockett, who was our senior on the audit, she came out and did all the fieldwork. And they're here basically tonight to help me answer any questions that you might have.
So I guess my question is, Catherine, is there anything that you want to add to what Michael talked about, that, because you're looking at more than just us on kind of the broad impacts of this?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. And, no, I think Michael explained it very comprehensively. I just want to add that, just for some background information, before, so GASP is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that says accounting standards for governmental entities. So it's very similar to what you usually hear about FASB for the corporate world. Before this year, so, well, actually, every year, CalPERS builds the town for the actuary required contribution for the year. Before the implementation of GASP 68, as long as the town paid for the entire required contribution for that year, there was no liability shown on the statement of net position, which is the entity-wide statement. For this year, it's the first year, like Michael said, that actually the entire unfunded liability had to be shown on the statement of net position. It does, is not a changing of the funding requirement, it is purely a reporting change. So like Michael said, the liability has always been there, but it is just shown, it is just being reported differently. However, it does not affect your fund financial statements. So as you can see, the liability is not reported on your general fund and other special revenue funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, Mike, I guess I'm a little confused. How is this different than the, you know, regular financial statements that we have for the town? And does it serve a different purpose?
Basically, this is a roll-up of the financial statements that we have every month, which are presented on a cash basis, and these statements actually reflect an accrual basis. So as you see at the top of the financial statements every month, basically what that means is that, on these statements, we're actually counting revenues that we received after the year-end closed. We're counting revenues that we received in July, August, September, that were earned or are associated with the earnings at June 30 for the prior fiscal year. And we're also reporting bills and things that we pay after June 30. So we may pay a lot of bills in July that are for June 30. In our regular financial statements, we're on, we're showing everything on a cash basis, which means that we're only showing the bills that were paid during the month, and that the revenues that were actually received during the month. So, so there is a little bit of a difference that happens because of that.
Does this new rule, this GASP 68, needing to include the pension liability, does that affect our creditworthiness, because our balance sheet is now showing a bigger hit for the pension liabilities, or?
I think because this is applied across the United States to all municipalities, it's sort of not a big surprise to anybody who's looking at it. Maybe somebody who was just looking at the financial statements of our town for the first time, and haven't looked at any others, which may include a lot of people, a lot of citizens, a lot of media, a lot of other people who look at these things and say, "Wait a second, what happened? You know, your fund balance went from $4 million to minus $2 million?" There is some education that has to go on to people as a result of that. So we're gonna be in, we're gonna be doing regular discussions of this kind of thing in our budget hearings, in other presentations that we do, just so that it's not, it's not, it doesn't become an issue. I think it's a good thing that it's transparency, that these things are actually being reflected, because, you know, as you know, we drew a lot of hit from the, from the people in the grand jury about the level of pension liabilities. All of these liabilities were being presented as the rules said they should be, but, you know, the, under the way that this, these are calculated, you know, the, when the stock market falls down, it has a high impact on the pension liability. And conversely, you'll see if the stock market goes way up, you'll see that pension liability always fluctuate around. And it's not something that we can just go and refinance and pay off, because it will constantly change. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, somewhat, it's a complex--
Catherine, did you want to add?
Did you want to add?
Yes, if I may add also too, the liability has always been reported on the footnotes, for professionals to evaluate the ability for, if the town can pay for the bonds, they would have already taken that into account. This is basically, the liability has always been there. This is the first year that GASP required the town to put it on the financial statements. Okay, thank you.
Maybe just one quick comment. Operationally, to answer your question, it doesn't affect your operations. We make our payments to PERS, whatever we're required to, based on what they tell us we need to pay, both for the side fund and retirement. It'd be up to the councils, a policy issue within the budget, if you wanted to create some kind of separate trust fund to build up, so you have additional assets there in the future to offset that liability. Because it's really, I look at it as on paper, so it's offset against our assets. That assumes, if you liquidate all your assets, roads, streetlights, every building, that you would still be short, and then in essence, it would be someone else's problem. But in essence, it doesn't affect us operationally.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you. Public comment? Anyone have any comment from the public? Okay, seeing none?
I just want to thank council for your directions during the audit, and then also the town manager and finance department for your cooperation. GASP 68 implementation wasn't easy, but it was rather uneventful for the town, so thank you very much for your assistance. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial statements and independent auditors' report for FY 1415.
Second.
Okay, motion Kohler, second read, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So we're moving right along to council reports and comments, or shall we?
I think maybe you might want to move, well, it's up to the council, but I thought maybe you would move to the regular items, then they can leave and maybe save either your council reports and town manager, either for after the workshop or before.
Okay, that sounds fine. So we will just then move into the regular agenda. So starting with item 11, to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of Town of Fairfax 2016 General Obligation Refunding Bonds to refinance the Town of Fairfax 2006 General Obligation Bonds for the purpose of maximizing savings to taxpayers. So, staff report from Michael Vavret, once again.
So I'll do some quick introductory comments, and then what we'll do is, we have bond counsel and our financial advisor here will report on kind of where we're at. But you may recall, just at your last April meeting last month, we talked about the refunding of bonds. At that time, bond counsel and our financial advisor came back and reported that there actually was this 1% interest differential requirement, which really made it that, if we were to refinance and try to take some money out, it would only be about $20,000, with the bulk of the savings going to taxpayers. And then after some discussion, the council determined that all the savings should go to taxpayers. And at that time, we reported that we would have to come back to this meeting, because we'd have to come back to you with a whole different set of documents, just to refund, in essence, just refinance that to have the savings go to taxpayers, which is estimated about $15,000 total per year over 11-year period, maybe it's about $165,000. But with that, unless Michael, our finance director, has some comments, what I'd like to do is just turn it over either to Mark or Brian, just to kind of offer some comments on the update. And actually, I think Mark prepared some supplemental information that Michelle can hand out to you. Or maybe Brian's going to speak then.
Okay, thank you for coming back.
Good evening, nice to see you again. Just as Garrett indicated, we switched the documents to effectively make this a much simpler transaction. It doesn't involve the authority any longer. It doesn't, much simpler. All we're doing is issuing what we call refunding bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to effectively pay off the old bonds. Now we have a lower interest rate, and as was indicated, there'll be an annual savings to the, to the taxpayers. The most, this is the most straightforward transaction where we have an opportunity to save money, just like you would refinance your home. And we actually have a, we have an investor who's, local investor, so I'm gonna let Mark pick it up from here.
Thank you, Brian. He came tonight, and he sat for an hour and 15 minutes, so he wanted to be able to say something. I'm Mark Pressman, your municipal advisor. When we came out of the last meeting, we restructured and recalibrated the estimated savings, which I think were about $15,000, $16,000 a year. What we did then is we have retained the services of a placement agent, which is required as part of the-- which is required as part of the new rules that we operate under. And the town reached out to your bank, which is Bank of Marin, asked if they would be interested in investigating and purchasing these bonds. So then they indicated, yes, they would be interested. So through the placement agent, the placement agent sent them an information package and indicated to them that if they came in with a really aggressive, responsible bid, that we would give them, in essence, the right of first refusal on the bonds, trying to keep things local and, you know, in-house sort of thing. But we also wanted to retain the opportunity. If it didn't look like they were coming with a good proposal, that we would be able to go out in the general marketplace with a full-blown RFP. They did come in with a proposal that came in on Monday at 2.12%. And when we were doing our estimates on this, we were using a 2.5% interest rate, which generated the $15,000, $16,000 savings. The 2.12% interest rate in our estimation is, I was surprised at how aggressive they were. That's a good, responsible proposal. We had estimated that when we were fine-tuning it, that the, and through the placement agent, that the bids might run from 2.02% to 2.5%. And the 2.12% is very good. But along with the interest rate, there are other considerations, and that includes the cost of issuance. We were looking at a $15,000 allowance for the investors' council to review the documents that Brian puts together. And Bank of Marin came back saying that they would do $10,000 in that respect. Also, the placement agent's fee would be $2,500 if it was just with Bank of Marin. But if we had to go through the full RFP process, their fee went up to $7,500. So with Bank of Marin, we were able to not only have a reasonably good interest rate, or a good interest rate, but also reduced costs of issuance. So that all comes down to the bottom line. And with their proposal, it amounts to about $19,000 a year savings, as opposed to the $15,000, $16,000. And another item that Bank of Marin kind of surprisingly offered is they have no restriction on the prepayment of the new bonds and no prepayment penalty. So we could refinance tomorrow until maturity. Typically, you have a 10-year lockout. And so that affords the town, I think, pretty good flexibility. So we did a comparison at a 2.02% interest rate, which is what we thought would be the most aggressive possibility, not a bird in hand, but the possibility. We compared that with the 2.12 of, we compared the 2.02 with a little bit higher cost of issuance with the 2.12 interest rate. And it looked like it was pretty close. It was $150,000, $250,000, $250,000 per year difference. Not a big difference.
For everybody, split among everybody. That's pennies for each.
Right, that's across the whole town. So we looked at, I talked with Michael about it and talked to the placement agent. And we said, why don't you go back to Bank of Marin and see? We could say, you know, you're really, really close. And we're going to the council tomorrow night. This was yesterday. If you could sharpen your pencil a little bit more, maybe, you know, we could maybe go to the council and say, yeah, you're it. We're not going to go to the full-blown deal. So the placement agent went back to them. And Bank of Marin came back this morning with a 2.10 interest rate. So they shaved it at two basis points. So they made an effort. And that brings the difference to, you know, just really, a hundred, just a little over $100 a year difference, which would be spread among everybody here. The difference would be that you would, if we go to an RFP, we don't know that we're going to beat 2.10. Number two, the call feature. And number three, the cost of issuance would be higher. So on balance, Michael, and it could be a bank in New York or Wisconsin. We don't know where it's going to go. You know, it's broadcast to everybody. So it would not necessarily be supporting local business. So on that discussion, Michael felt that it would be appropriate to go to Bank of Marin. However, I think the ultimate decision is U5. So that, we just wanted to present that to you, give that. It's your call. We can do a full-blown RFP. The Bank of Marin proposal is good until June 14. So that remains, however. If we go to the full-blown RFP, the placement agent's fee goes up by $5,000. So that would negatively impact their benefit a little bit. So it's up to you now as to what you would like to do.
Okay, but before we go to questions, just to clarify, are we, what is the decision that we are making?
In essence, if you adopt the resolutions, how it would work is you would be authorized in refunding a bond. And in this case, we're asking, we're recommending that you also direct us to do a private placement. So you just go to Bank of Marin and you don't do, refer to as RFP, get other investors to buy different assets.
Okay, so that recommendation is added since the time of, that's in addition to the recommendation in the staff report? Because it's new.
Right, so that's new. So it was always an option before, but we just didn't have that information and we were trying to get this to you. So yes, so we'd be also asking authority to do private placement.
Okay, so questions or comments?
Just a quick one. This may be for Mike or Garrett or for Mark. So on the chart where it shows $18,849, .49 average annual savings, is that the amount that annually, is that amount annually goes to the people in the town? Okay, so that's great, because when I first read this, I thought this was a one-time. But this is annual, so that's wonderful.
That will go through the year 2027, each year.
So I think that's a really, that's a really good, through 2027?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's really nice for people.
You can see the total savings is $207,000 in the aggregate.
Okay.
And on a present value basis, that's $189,000. Yeah, $183,000, sorry.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, so thank you. That's the only question I had. I was thinking one-time, but it's great that it's for years. Thank you.
Anybody else on council? Peter?
Yeah, a couple of questions. What is the NPV savings? What does that stand for?
Net present value savings. That's bringing it down to today's dollars.
Okay, so there's only $4,000 difference on that figure versus what you think is like our, the best deal?
Something that's perspective. It's a bird in hand versus something potential.
Yeah, so the annual cost difference, I mean, they're within, looks like about $100 bucks of what you could hope for in an optimal situation, so.
Plus the call feature.
Right, yeah, the flexibility and so forth. So, yeah, I mean, it seems like you've kind of hit, they've come forward with a proposal that's, based on what you're saying, is about optimal, what we could hope for.
It is very, very competitive. I can't say it's the best, because we don't go through the RFP process, but it's darn close.
And there'd be other costs associated with putting it out to bid that might wipe out these potential savings?
Correct, okay.
John, did you have something? It looked like you were going for the button.
I was looking that way, yeah. But no, I mean, I suppose I could make a comment. It speaks for the relationship that we have. We refinanced a number of things recently and changed our banking to Bank of Marin. Went out and asked everybody to bid on it, and they came in very competitively. And it shows the advantage of keeping your money local and, you know, it's good. There's a lot of reasons to keep your money in the community.
Okay, public comment. Seeing none? Let's bring it back to council and if anyone's ready to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion. I'd also like to say, I think, all the, first of all, the aggressiveness, the no restriction on payment of the bonds, no pre-penalty payment for prepayment is great. Local business, John points. The money going back to the residents is wonderful. So I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of Town of Fairfax, Marin County, California, 2016 general obligation refunding bonds. And also to direct that we work with the local option.
Yeah, I think if you just say, direct staff, work with the bond advisor and legal counsel to do a private placement with the Bank of Marin.
Okay, what he said.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second directing staff and legal counsel to, for direct local.
And the resolution.
And the resolution, yes.
So we have a motion Kohler and a second read. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it passes unanimously. And thank you very much for all the good news.
Yeah, and just to add, that's around $50 a household in Fairfax that they'll get back every year, right? Just to make it plain.
Oh, thank you, John. So now we will move on, on the regular agenda, to item number 12, which is, am I correct? How are we doing in terms of the workshop? Okay, so we'll finish moving through the regular agenda. Item 12 is a review and the design of the Class 1 bike lane from Glenn Drive to White Hill Middle School's Athletic Field, Lefty Gomez, along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to complete the Fairfax Bicycle Spine Project, which is very exciting. And Garrett, do you have a staff report for us?
Sure, before I turn it over to Andrew with Prece Associates, just back in, I think you may recall, back in March 2015, the town actually received a grant from TAM to complete the Bike Spine Route, which is basically the last 700 linear feet from around Glenn Drive to Lefty Gomez Field. We received $350,000 with a $13,000 match on the town's behalf to complete that Class 1 bike lane. And so what we'd like to do is, we're pretty close in design and we thought it was appropriate to have Prece and Associates come out and make a brief presentation on what it's going to look like and their outreach and kind of what the timeframe is. So with that, like, turn it over to Andrew Lee.
Great, thanks for being here.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Am I able to change the slide? Okay, that's all right. Great, thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Garrett. Like you mentioned, my name's Andrew Lee. I'm a transportation engineer with Prece Transportation Consulting. And David unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, but I'm here to give you an overview of what we've been working on so far with the path expansion. I'll give you a quick overview of the history on the bike route project. Like Garrett mentioned, TAM gave the town some money back in 2011 to install the signage and pavement markings to establish Phase 1, which was mostly on-street bike lanes, buffered bike lanes. Next slide. This is the map of the entire corridor, as you're probably familiar with. And White Hill Middle School is right at the very top end of the Bike Spine corridor. And so what we were trying to do is finish off the project. Some of the features that you already know are on-street, the shared lane markings, bike lane markings. Go ahead. And so as Garrett mentioned before as well, in Phase 2, what we've gotten from TAM is $350,000 with a $13,000 match to widen the route on Drake between Glenn Drive and White Hill Middle School's Athletic Fields. The original concept developed was to route the Bike Spine through Shamran Court. But that was not a preferred alternative. And so what we are going with now is a widened multi-use path. Right now, there's an existing sidewalk of about five feet. And that would be widened to between 10 and 12 feet to allow for two-way pedestrian and bicyclist traffic, so there wouldn't be a conflict. It's just a bit too narrow right now. It has a lot of other benefits to the larger community beyond just the Bike Spine. It improves the design of the intersections at Shamran Court and at Glenn Drive. You can see in the aerial photo that I'll show later that the intersections are designed to be rather wide and people are able to turn if they're driving rather quickly. And so the design is going to improve the sightlines for the pedestrians, make them a lot more visible, improve the sightlines coming out of Shamran Court, because their view is a bit blocked by parked vehicles and stop transit. But I want to emphasize that we would be maintaining the existing lane widths on Drake, so those wouldn't be affected. The existing bike lane would still stay in place. Marin Transit Stop wouldn't be affected. And we wouldn't be touching any existing trees. So on the next slide. This is a quick overview of the aerial, as you can tell. So Glenn Drive is on the far right, Shamran Court, right in the middle. And there's painted buffer areas where there's parking right now. And that is basically extra width that the paint is trying to reduce so that it wouldn't be such an enticing corridor to go quickly, because the wider the street, the more people tend to drive. So next slide. We've superimposed the plan. And basically, what we've done is taken that existing sidewalk alignment. We've kept it within the existing right-of-way, but we widened it out to between 10 and 12 feet. It's a bit of a meandering path. You'll notice at the corners of the intersections, that the corners are bulbed outward to reduce the turn radius. And what that does for the vehicles is it slows them down, but also allows for them to see pedestrians stopped at the corner, whereas right now, they're set rather far back and it's a very long crossing distance for the pedestrians. And let's see. I think the parking would be removed. And I do have some information on who's parking there on Drake right now in talking to some of the homeowners' associations. We did do quite a bit of outreach, on the next slide, to Cannon Village and Shamran Court. We talked to both of the homeowners' associations there. We talked to the facilities managers at White Hill Middle School. And we also consulted Marin Transit to see whether or not we'd be affecting their transit stop. Good news is that the plans were received rather well. The homeowners' association representatives saw the benefit in narrowing the intersections. And Marin Transit wasn't going to be affected with the bulb out. And so everything is, so far, so good. With regards to the folks that stop and park along the street, they are not Fairfax residents. They do come from parts outside to park there during the day and to take transit during the day, during working hours. And so it is publicly available parking. There are other parking spaces, not along Drake, but in the local area. And so I think what we would be doing is, what the town would be doing is posting some notices to give a heads up that the parking would be going away and where other available parking would.
If I may add, not to interrupt, that a lot of those are people coming to watch their kids play sports. So going out through the leagues would be a really good way to get that information. I think it's mostly that, in the afternoons and weekends.
Okay, great. And then, so next slide. Where we are now is that we're about to finalize the design. And with the finalization of the design, what the town would be doing is advertising for bids, hopefully for construction later this summer. And then with the completion of the path, later this summer, and then with the completion of the path, everything would be ready to go with the next school year. So with that, I can take your questions.
Just a quick question, was, just curious, how many parking spaces are we talking about?
We're looking at about three spaces between Glenn and Shamran, and then there's two spaces just west of Shamran that are really not legal, because they're just in the recessed bit of the corner there, so the practical effect would be about five spaces. I think the legal spaces are about three spaces.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about how, if you can quickly describe how you would deal with that bus stop, which is right at Shamran.
Sure. Could you scroll back?
Because buses along that area are always a really, a problem for the kids riding.
Yeah.
So I wondered how it was designed, I can't quite tell from this.
So, right now, where the buses stop, it's along the existing curb line, they're still able to pull over into the bus lane, that, I mean, excuse me, into the bike lane, that's where they stop now. I think the issue that you might be aware of is that some of the buses lay over there, they stop and take their break there. It's not an official layover point for Marin Transit, and so that place for them to lay over would go away, but we've discussed with Marin Transit, and they acknowledge that it's not an official layover space, so they have to find other space to lay over. They actually have an official layover spot across the street that they're not using, and so most likely, they're going to have to start using that space again.
Great, anybody else?
Yeah, the existing bike lanes, the Class 2 bike lanes along Sir Francis Drake, that currently have, I mean, it goes to where the hatched line is, and then it drops down just as you get up past Shamran, it's with just a line in between that. Those will continue to exist?
Yeah, so right now, the existing bike lanes, I think, are about 5 feet wide, and then they still have an extra buffer between traffic and the bike lane itself of about 3 feet wide. That would stay in place, so the lane with the buffer would remain. What would be going away is the buffered area between the parking and the bike lane, because that would just be the new curb.
Sure.
And that's actually where the buses are laying over, so that is the part that would be affected, but the bike lane itself wouldn't be narrowed or touched in any other way.
Okay, good.
So, the item was to review, were there any comments from the public? Yes?
Hi, I'm just wondering, were any of the local bicycle organizations consulted that might have a lot of experience riding in this area? They might provide some valuable input. And is there any tie-in to other regional bike paths? Thank you.
So, a lot of the outreach, when developing the Bike Spine to the cycling organizations, was done back in 2012, when the entire corridor was laid out. So, that was, you know, when there was a lot of community input on what the alignment should be. With regard to this particular segment, it is really only between Glenn Drive and the athletic fields, and so there wasn't any option for different alignment, because the alternative was actually Shamran Court, and that wasn't considered feasible anymore. So we were sort of left with that one alignment onto the athletic field.
Yeah, and just if I may add, that there was, there was a lot of community involvement, Safe Routes to Schools was very involved in this as we went forward, which means MCB was, and John and I have been involved with Safe Routes to Schools and the Transportation Authority, so yes, this has been coordinated with many of the players with the most expertise. Thank you.
Yeah, and my question is, this bike lane that's on Drake, that's the regional connector to the other bicycle routes in the area. And so that's what that question was about, was making sure that's still intact.
Well, that's good, I mean, you have the best of all worlds, because people that are, you know, riding out to Point Reyes, they can still use the existing bike lane, but it's really good to have that sort of segregated bike path for the kids, especially between, you know, the road that's used for Glenn Drive, which the kids are going to be using for, you know, getting to school, and then where the athletic field is, so it's good that that's, you know, completely off the road there.
Yeah, and this is particularly for the kids when they're leaving school, for them to be able to ride in the eastbound direction on the path, and not have to go into the bike lane, and be able to wait until they get to the flashing beacon and the marked crosswalk before they cross over, because otherwise, they would just be traveling in the wrong direction on the sidewalk.
Yeah, and perhaps I should mention, for the benefit of the audience, I'm sure you're aware of this, is that one of the problems for kids leaving Drake and getting onto the sidewalk going, sorry, White Hill, was that some of them were crossing Drake to get to the Alima side, and this does involve a short retaining wall.
Yes.
Because there's a grade separation between Sir Francis Drake and this new bike path, and so that will highly discourage that cut across, which is dangerous.
Okay, then, Andrew, thank you very much, and I would like you to actually let Mr. Prezi know that he owes us $10, because this is my photograph, and it's on every single page of this report. Alrighty.
You're cutting him off easy.
So, I believe that we, we've reviewed this, and do we need to do anything further with it?
No, we'll, what happens next is, actually, when it goes to bid, we come back to you with the bid or to the lowest responsible bidder, and that will be June or July.
All right, excellent, thank you so much. And so, yeah, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we will continue with the workshop, and we're going to reconfigure the room just a little bit, David, before you go. What we're going to do is, we're going to use the, this screen, so we're going to move the council members down here, and we're going to sit here, watch the, and do the workshop, so we're all on the ground together, if anyone is here to stay, and then we'll come back up for, oh no, we'll stay there, we'll stay there throughout the workshop, so we are leaving the dais. Okay, have a good five minutes. Okay, so we're moving on to item 10, which is the workshop, we'll be conducting a workshop to discuss and consider the extension of half-cent, which is 0.5 percent, sales tax known as Measure D, which is due to expire in March 2017. And Garrett and Michael Vivret will be leading us through the workshop, and there we go.
Okay, so we've kind of changed this up a little bit, so you're on the floor, and then I can reach the laptop, but we prepared this PowerPoint, just if people want to kind of see what's going on. And so, you know, maybe as some background, you know, you may recall, back in April, we talked about this, and that was impetus for conducting the workshop. Back in November 2011, the voters, actually 65% of the voters approved this add-on half-cent sales tax, took effect in April 2012, it's good for five years, actually expires the end of March in 2017. Originally, it was proposed on the ballot to address structural budget deficits. What the council was aware of, and the reason for this workshop to kind of talk about, is the reason for possibly placing on the ballot, which I think that's what we want to do in 2016, is to make sure that we don't have a gap in funding. In other words, not being able to collect the sales tax after March until whenever the effective date would be. It represents about, the estimate's changed, but it's over $400,000 in terms of our general fund revenue, that's about 5% of our general fund budget. And so, roughly, where does the money come from? This is a pie chart that shows our revenues. You can see, almost 60% comes from property tax, a little over 6% actually from Measure J, the special municipal tax that was just approved a couple of years ago. And then, sales tax represents about 13%, a little over 13%, of which 5% of that is the half-cent sales tax, or we refer to it as Measure D. So this chart is for illustrious purposes, and what it is, is it shows, it's called a capture and gap analysis report, and it shows as a typical buyer in the Bay Area, how much you would expect people to spend on certain things in your community. So if you look at this chart, all this does is shows that yellow is food products, and what that shows is, for grocery stores, we collect 200% of what typical communities might only get a, you want to target 100%. That means everyone's spending exactly what a typical person, so we get a lot of people probably shopping at Good Earth. But more importantly, and the only reason for this slide, and this is based on the 1%, is that, look at the categories here, for auto sales, new, used, miscellaneous vehicles, and wholesale building materials, it's zero. Out of the 1%, we don't collect any revenues from the purchase of autos, because we don't have any dealerships in town. But, with this half-cent sales tax, which the new estimate is about $420,000 for next fiscal year, you could see, right here, we now, of the new sales tax, we actually collect 17% on auto sales. 14% is new, making a big chunk.
It looks like 14, am I looking at it wrong?
Well, it's, it's the two, miscellaneous vehicles and auto sales, new, it represents about 17%.
Oh, okay, I see it.
Yeah, 17%, and you see, building materials is about 2, so that's like 20%. So what does that ultimately all mean? It actually means that 68% of that half-cent sales tax is actually captured from purchases outside of Fairfax. So while, if you eat in town, we get the 1.5%, if you eat outside of town, we don't get anything, but if you buy cars, online purchases, or anything that requires you to give them your zip code, then we actually capture that portion of the sales tax. So a quick look, auto sales for last fiscal year, I think is about $60,000 is what we received in sales tax model sale. So it's pretty, actually, pretty impressive when you think about it. So with that, in the table, in the staff report, we put together what we call preliminary five-year forecasts, and it's still rough, because we're still working on the actual proposed budget, but in here, we're saying for next fiscal year, let's say it looks like it's general fund appropriation to be about 8.5 million, think about, collect about 8.5 million total revenue, have a slight dip into the fund balance, probably due to capital projects, and what you could see here, the key number is ending fund balance about 2.2 million. It's above the 25% suggested level we should keep our reserves at, and you can look over at a five-year forecast, assuming that we continue with the sales tax measure, that we dip into reserves, but overall, we're keeping our fund balance at a healthy level. So you move forward, and we took a look at this, is what happens if you did not have an extension of the 5, half a percent, sales tax? Not too bad.
Wait a minute, I'm mixed up. So with Table A, that showing, including, that showing, assuming that we renewed the sales tax or not?
Correct, correct, yes, that's assuming renewal of the sales tax. Table B makes an assumption of what happens if the sales tax isn't renewed. And what happens in fiscal years 16, 17, because it expires the end of March, you have about three months where you wouldn't be able to collect it, so you could see that, so you would have to dip into fund balance, you could see, fund balance still remains at the end of the year about 25%, pretty good. The problems started arising in the subsequent years, obviously, because in 1718, this makes assumption, if you did not change your expenditure patterns, you would have to dip in, you would lose about $450,000 worth of revenue, you could see what that does to the fund balance, and you could see over time, if you did nothing different, obviously, the town would have no fund balance at the end of the five-year period. And what this means graphically, the next slide just shows what the difference is between general fund expenses and revenues. So the taller chart is expenses, and the shorter thing is revenues, and you could see, obviously, graphically, there's a, there's a difference there. If you wanted to see a line chart, the top line is what the general fund, fund balance is projected to be over a five-year period. The bottom line obviously shows what happens if, without the sales tax, if you didn't change anything, your fund balance would be roughly at zero at the end of the five-year period. So, what are the policy issues for this workshop? Well, and it seems this is the path we're going, is some type of renewal, extension of the sales tax. Some things to think about is, what's that level? Do you keep it at half a percent? Do you reduce it to quarter percent? Or do you increase it to maybe 3/4 or 1%? And then you have the question of, the last tax was for five years, and the question is, should it be longer? 10 years, 20 years, or some kind of something similar?
That was me, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I moved a paper.
Okay. So, to help you out in comparison, what's going on in the county, you could see off the chart, that the county's 8.5%, some of the other communities are 8.5%, mostly the ones that don't generate a lot of sales tax. Fairfax is 9%, Larkspur's 9, Navado's 8 and 3/4, the top one is Samrefel at 9 and 1/4. So this kind of gives you a little comparison of what's going on in Marin County, since typically, that's where people would shop, that live in Marin County. The next chart, what it did was, we created this thing called county base rate. Now, the state base rate is 7.5, the county base rate, we refer to it as 8.5, because that includes 1%, which includes TAM, the Smart Train, and one other thing. And this chart is to show you who actually has an add-on sales tax. Corda Madera, theirs is for six years, they just enacted, voted in, took effect in 2014. We have Fairfax. Larkspur, they just again did theirs, 2014, expires in five years, half a percent. Navado, they had one for half a percent, it was expiring, so they just took it to a vote, it was actually extended, but at a lower rate, a quarter percent, and theirs actually has no expiration date. It could be repealed or rescinded, but it has no defined term. Sansemo has a half a percent, theirs is for 10 years. Samrefel, they just did one for 3/4 of a percent, and theirs is for 20 years. Sausalito has a half a percent, and that's at 10 years. And then the last chart we have is just projected revenues, because it's always fluctuating, our latest estimate's a little lower, but it's about, just use a number of over $400,000 a year, and that's off the most likely scenario. The next scenario that Michael put together was a scenario from the sales tax consultant that said, "Well, if you had a recession, here's how it could look based on historical impacts of recessions." Still over $400,000, not quite as much, kind of gives you a range. And really, for the workshop, really, the next steps would be, assuming that we're going to want to renew and extend, then you have to call for election, we obviously have the ballot language, ballot arguments, have June and July council meetings. What we did was, we went back and looked at what we did with Measure J. In Measure J, you actually had a lot more workshops and meetings, but what you ultimately did was, we brought the resolution, call for election, and the ballot language, council reviewed that, and then, what I don't remember is if council had a subcommittee, or we think we just had a bunch, several meetings to talk specifically about the ballot language, and then the council directed a subcommittee to actually prepare the ballot arguments. So that's what we did under Measure J.
So what would, what would we be doing at the June and July council meetings, I'm mixed up?
So June, what we'd do in June, we would actually come to you with the ballot language.
Okay.
It wouldn't be, we'd come to you with the ballot language, get that direction, because I think you're going to want to talk about it a little bit. At that time, you may decide that, ooh, we don't really like what you came up with, talk about it, we could revise it, you may form a subcommittee to come up with something. But in July would be the key meeting, where you actually call for the election, approve whatever the ballot language and ordinance would be. And then, you could either then create a subcommittee to draft the ballot arguments, or you can hold some special meetings to talk about the different things. So, we're starting pretty early, we have a lot of time, so you have lots of flexibility in deciding how you want to address this. We have a budget workshop coming up in May, we can continue discussion there. I believe in Measure J, that's what we did, we actually continued the workshop discussion during the budget workshop. But with that, unless our treasurer or finance director has some comments, that pretty sums up kind of what the overview is.
I'll save it for questions.
Okay, thanks, Garrett. So, bringing it to council for questions.
So, when you say that you'll be bringing something back, what you're bringing back is from the staff report. In Attachment 5, you have the paragraph text, the town, in this old one, you have the town attorneys impartial analysis, and then, of course, you have the full text of Measure D. Are you just talking, which parts of those are you talking about?
Right now, we were thinking it'd just really be the ballot language.
Okay, the top in the box?
The top in the box, that's the very short paragraph there?
Yeah, I think the key would be, we can come back with the box on top, and then we'd have the full text of the ordinance, because the ordinance is not going to change a whole lot.
So, oh, I'm sorry, David. So, just a question on timing, again, just on these next steps. So, in the June council meeting, you would come to us with the ballot language, which is that text in the box, but then also the, the language for the actual, what we would...
The ordinance, yes.
The ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, and then, so as far as ballot arguments, would we decide that tonight? Who would be drafting that? Or would that be after the June meeting? It seems to me it makes more sense after the June.
Right, I think last time, we just did it after the June meeting. Last time, we actually did it in July, but in June, you could select a couple of council members to work on the ballot argument, and you would have enough time where you could actually take the ballot arguments, if you wanted to, back to the council for review. I think last time with Measure J, we just started running out of time.
Well, I don't know that we ran out of time. Well, I don't know that we ran out of time. I think there was a decision made that there were a couple of council members that would work on it, and the council gave authority to do that, to draft that. But I also have another question. Just, I guess I missed this before, but, so, with the typical tax, the eight point five, without any add-ons, all that money, so any online purchases, auto sales, things that happen in other counties, or other parts of the state, or even other parts of the county where we don't have, or it's country, where we don't have to give our zip code, we don't capture that. There's some statutory provision that doesn't allow us to capture any of that. But if we have our own sales tax measure, then we can capture that stuff, which is mostly auto sales and probably online purchases, and maybe a few other things.
That's a fair thing. Yeah, that's correct. It's usually point of sale, but that half cent just goes to the community that actually has it.
So that's, to me, that's a really intriguing, I mean, it really allows us to do things locally, which the state can't, so when the state comes in, when the state's in bad trouble, and they start taking things away, they couldn't, under any circumstances, take away our own little sales tax piece. They might be able to borrow other parts of sales tax for something. Is that correct?
They had something, sometime back, called a triple flip.
Right.
Where they changed the timing of payments. Didn't short the payments, and even ultimately, they, you know, worked it out with all of their exchanges with property tax and stuff like that, so that, you know, the cities and towns were supposed to have been made whole on that.
No, but I guess my point is, I'm talking about, let's say, we go for a half or a one percent. Even under the worst-case scenario where the state is robbing, potentially borrowing, sales tax money from locals, they cannot capture that one percent or half a percent. Is that correct?
The things that I think we would be concerned about from the state is the kind of administrative charges they caught, charges for collecting the sales tax and that sort of thing. They do ding us for collection of that tax.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, that's, to me, is very good information. It's also really good information, the charts, which looked at the different ranges. But also, one of the things I think I was very intrigued by was the idea of really going longer. Because part of what I see is, you know, two years ago, we were talking about a parcel tax. If we continue this five-year thing, we will be in this constant thing. And the reality is, we need this money. The structural deficit that occurred that started the genesis of this, that's not the reason now. It's a part of our budget. And it seems to me that people get very fatigued and confused with this continual going back for things. And so, I guess my thoughts are, is I think we really ought to consider quite a bit longer, maybe ten to twenty years. I mean, I like the idea of perpetuity, but that may not be palatable. And I do like the idea of potentially considering even a quarter percentage more. But those are just my thoughts.
Anyone else?
I've got a question. Just procedurally, Garrett, do we need to bring this to ourselves twice for a second reading before we approve it to be put on the ballot, or just one?
By resolution.
One resolution?
Just by resolution.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Well, yeah, in effect, we'll be, we're talking about it tonight, we'll be talking about it at our budget workshop, no doubt, and then we'll be talking about it. So in effect, we'll be bringing it back a few times. Procedurally, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot to be said for the local tax, and certainly, it's, you know, if it's five percent of our general fund, it's a working component of how we make the town work. There's a lot to be said for, you know, us taking care of our own business. And, you know, we're not looking around, I mean, I, you know, there's a lot of things that I try to respond to, that the community wants, looking for grants for things. And, you know, I can tell you, grants are getting fewer and fewer as time goes by. On the Transportation Authority, Marin County, now I'm talking on a county level, Marin County is what they call a self-help county, in that they have passed a Measure A, which is, you know, basically a congestion, you know, helping traffic, you're trying to solve your problems by agreeing to pay for, you know, what you need. And that, when you're going to look for grants, which, you know, part of the Transportation Authority does, in effect, do that, you know, you have projects that you're pitching to state agencies to try to get funding for, for transportation. And you're looked on favorably by these grant- awarding agencies, you know, and they say, well, if you're willing to tax yourself for that, then we are more likely to say, well, okay, you know, if you're pulling yourself up for your own bootstraps, we will help you. And so that kind of, you get more points on your matrix of, you know, how they decide how to award grants. You know, the other thing is, is, I think, as an appeal to people who live in Fairfax, the biggest, when Measure D was going around last time, and, you know, when it was Measure F originally, the, a big appeal was that the money stayed...
Measure J, I think is what you're talking about.
Yeah, not Measure J, but the money stays in Fairfax, is basically, that's, long story short, that was the appeal to people, and they say, well, you know, we're taking care of our own house. You know, looking around, our roads, some of them are in need of help, we don't have the money to fix those roads. And I think that's an argument, Barbara, also, for thinking, well, maybe it shouldn't be half a percent, maybe it should be three-quarters or something like that. That's certainly something that I would like to hear from the community on, because, you know, it's real money, and it's, you know, it's real taxes. But at the same time, people are also asking for things, you know, fix our sidewalks, fix our streets, you know, provide parks and rec stuff, trails in the hills. I mean, people are asking for these things. These things cost money. And, you know, I for one, am willing to pay for things that I want, and I think that people in the community are also. And if people in the community are hearing this and not thinking that, then let us know.
Perhaps we could look at it from another perspective. Folks rely on the existing services, they would appreciate new ones, enhanced. But they've actually staked out some interesting positions in the last few years. The Phil Lesh tariff in crossroads came in. That would have been netting by anybody's conservative estimate, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Members of the community, a small number at that time, voiced their opinion, and Mr. Lesh took his business elsewhere, and they are enjoying it, I'm sure tremendously, in San Rafael. We had a gas station that the community decided it no longer wanted to be a gas station. It'll now be, I understand, some sort of restaurant of some sort, but it's not going to produce the tens upon tens of thousands of dollars that that would have produced. So people make decisions in their community, but that doesn't alleviate us of the enjoyment and opportunity to pay for the fire department, to pay, or pay into the JPA. We run, and have been for a decade, I think, short on a police officer. We don't have a public works director. The list goes on of things that we would like, things that we need. But people have made an affirmative decision of how they want this community to be ordered. Well, somewhere along the way, there has to be, not a reckoning, but there has to be a balancing of interests. And it seems to me that that balance is found in the fact that we come back periodically, although I am in favor of what Barbara's talking about, of saying, well, we have to fill that gap some way, and that gap is called taxes. And it's property taxes, it's sales taxes, it's UUT taxes, it's a raft of taxes, it probably keeps my vivarette up at night thinking of all the taxes that we have to maintain and keep a handle on. But that's the, it's not a deal with the devil, it's the deal that we've made as a compact in our community. And so, I look forward to the conversation, not just on the half, but on the moving it up a quarter of a point, as Barbara's discussing. And certainly, I think that she raises an excellent point on the continually, you know, going back into campaigns here, and I would say, you know, at a minimum, we want to do it at about a ten-year clip. So some introductory thoughts.
Yeah, I'll just speak, well, anyway, I'm just looking down the line.
Sure. I think I echo everyone's thoughts so far. I look at it as, you know, we're investing in our community, and, you know, I think of all the taxes that I pay to the federal government, and they're going to, you know, fund drone strikes in Yemen, or God knows what, or, and there is something about keeping the money here in the community, investing in the community. And I think people in our town have a fairly enlightened view and understanding that, and a willingness to pay for, you know, quality of life here in Fairfax. So, the question is, you know, how much, you know, resistance would it get on a ballot measure? I would tend to want to increase it a little bit, just because it would allow us to do more things, more things with parks and rec. And I also foresee in the near future, we could be in for some harder economic times, and so revenues from other sources could drop, property taxes could drop, believe it or not. I mean, even though we're in a white-hot real estate market, you know, all the fundamentals are saying that housing, the stock market, these are kind of bubbles that could deflate rather quickly. And I think we took a pretty big hit in 2009, when the housing market took a big dive. And there may also be, in terms of macroeconomic trends, we could be looking at deflation. So, you know, the value of things may go down, and the revenues may go down. So, and those kind of bigger economic trends, or at least as I sort of see them, might tend to make us want to think about going up to a quarter percent, just to be able to have some more reliable revenue that we can somewhat count on more. So those are, those are kind of my thoughts. And, I mean, San Rafael has gone to three-quarters of a percentage. I'd be real interested to hear from the council members how that went in San Rafael, just kind of get a feel for things. And, you know, ultimately, that's what democracy is about, is just trying to, us, you know, respond to what voters want or anticipate, and what they'll support. But I tend to think that a minor bump up to three-quarters of a cent would be, that's something I'd like to see, and I think that the town would probably support us. But I could be wrong on that, too.
So do we know, Garrett, Garrett, do we know if San Rafael already had an existing add-on before they went to three-quarters?
Yes, they did.
What did they have?
They, I think there's a...
It's in the...
Oh, is it in here? Oh, I didn't see.
They had point five, and they increased it to point seven-five.
Oh, okay.
San Rafael, interestingly, ran theirs for twenty years out, so...
No, they're actually, oh, yeah, Navado's the one who went into forever. But just one thing on theirs, I think they were focusing a lot on their new safety building for their, so it was kind of a, what I recall reading in the paper, it was, a lot of it was about this new fancy, big safety building that was going to cost many millions.
But they, but they would, that would be specifying, and it would be a different type of vote, no? I mean, if it were a general fund...
Could we look and see if it was a special purpose? I don't know if that may have been just the way they highlighted it. Do you remember that, how they did that?
Which would have been a two-thirds majority requirement.
I don't know that they called that out in particular, is what that tax was for.
Yeah, we could check.
I think it was just in general, the conversation.
Yeah, because you can, you can always say what you'll spend it on, but you don't have to have the restriction. You could just say that's what you're thinking you'll do.
So I just wanted to make one comment, and it really echoes what David and David has said several times, is, we choose to afford to keep us the way we are and we want to be. So by making decisions like the gas station, we, this is a luxury, to be able to listen to a community, but it can't just go one way. So I think often, people's perception is that we did it, we're keeping our character, and then when it comes time to ask everyone to share in the load of then being able to afford that, we end up getting people who start to really question. And I think the questions are vital right now. People should come with their questions. But I do want to keep that in everybody's, you know, minds as we move forward, and try and take what may be seen by many as, or some, as a bold step, but something that is, something that is vital to our keeping this town going. So, is there any, is it a time to ask if there's any public comment here, before we come back? And you're the public tonight. And the podium is right there for you.
If this is about revenue generation, to provide better services, ongoing services for the town, is there an alternative to increasing the taxes that has possibly been considered, as other jurisdictions do, whether it be New York versus New Jersey, whether it be Hong Kong, wherever it might be, where there are things done to encourage negotiation, to encourage businesses to conduct business in a way that's compatible with the town, that might be an alternative, that might raise even more revenue? Just a thought.
Okay, thank you. So, Garrett, could you just walk us forward a little bit as to what it is that you hope to get from us tonight? And then, what the next steps are?
Okay. So what we're really looking for is, we understand we've are in agreement that we need to renew and extend the tax. So the first question is, it sounds like a majority of you are interested in perhaps increasing the half a percent to three-quarters of a percent. So that's the first question. And then the second question would be, if that's the case, then how long would you like to extend the tax for? Those are probably the two critical policy questions.
Yes, for me, I would just say, this may not be the rest of the council, but I'll just tell you, I like the point seven-five percent. And I would also like to consider a twenty-year timeframe, potentially others would, well, maybe too long for other people, I'm just giving my thoughts. Because I know that campaigning is difficult, but it's also trying to explain to people why you are keeping, coming back to them. And anything, there could always be a provision in there, that it could be repealed by the council, it could be rescinded by the voters. But that's just my two cents, which is only one of five.
That's not your two cents, it's your quarter of a cent on top of the other. I'd go for the three-quarter at ten.
Yeah, just intuitively, it seems like ten is an easier sell. I'd like the idea of, if we could keep it for twenty. It's hard to gauge what, you know, what the voters would support, you know, we're kind of trying to anticipate that, too. I like the idea of it being a longer period, it'd be nice to not have to come back so frequently. I do know that last time, it was approved by sixty-five percent of the voters. And what year was that? That was in 2011? And I don't know if the economic times, you know, if that, you know, just trying to gauge how people might, you know, might respond.
You know, it's interesting that you raise this, because the issue is different. You know, it's interesting that you raise this, because the issue is different. If you read what is written in here back in 2011, it was really a conversation in the midst of the recession, the Great Recession. And the conversation, I think, this time is different. What Renee and I are suggesting is it's a quality of life and governance decision, as opposed to then, which was, we are sinking very, very fast, and we are not acquiring the type of revenue that even with draconian cuts is allowing us to succeed. The conversation now is shifting to, how do we want to see our town going forward on a stable economic base, not in times of economic peril?
But I think one thing to add to that, David, if you look at the figures, I realize, you know, the 2011 period really was about a deficit. But if you look at the figures, it's not just about keeping Fairfax the way it is and being able to turn away things. We are in a world a hurt, to the tune of more than a half a million that we depend on to provide basic services as well. So at the time you all did that, the costs weren't as high to provide the normal town services, and what we're talking about is even just doing the half a percent keeps us whole. And then if we, if we increase it, as some of us are suggesting, that gives us more ability to provide better services, more flexibility, because we turned away a couple of businesses that would have brought in a lot of revenue. So I think you're right.
We are shading. Let me suggest, we are, we're shading, we're saying the same thing, we're just shading. Over that 10-year period, I think, well, Vivre, I'll have a thought on this, that over that 10-year period, that quarter cent increase in sales tax will, in a sense, pay for the same thing, it's just costs will go up. Our fire department, for years and years and years, managed during the recession to keep the amount that we contributed very low, because it had amassed a very good pile of reserve funds, but those have now been used up entirely. So that quarter cent sales tax, in a way, and Michael, correct me if I'm terribly wrong here, it's just keeping us, maybe not treading water, maybe we'll do better. But in a sense, if you're going to go out for 10 years, you've got to take into consideration the rising costs of pretty much everything.
I sort of compare it to surfing. When you've got a wave, it's much better to be in the best place on the wave, which is just slightly ahead of what your needs are, instead of being behind the wave, which ends up being much harder to, harder to do what you need to do. So, you know, having a little bit of a reserve, a little bit, you know, the extra, extra 1% kind of gives you the additional amount, the buffer that you need in order to be able to, you know, fix a street when you need to, and do those sorts of things.
We're on the same page, I think we're just circling around the issue with greater context.
You're right. John?
Yeah. Does this work?
Yeah, it's on, no, it's good.
Does this work? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that costs are increasing, and, you know, I hear people asking for a lot. You know, I'm looking at our streets falling apart in front of us, and knowing that we're still going to be paying off the bonds that did the last little piece of fixing them, you know, pretty much that's over, but we're going to be paying them off for another 10 years. So basically, we got about half of what we needed out of that, or maybe it was only a third. And, you know, frankly, it's, you know, would you, as you so rightly put, you know, would you rather put your money into bombing Yemen or fixing your own house, you know? You know, there's a lot of stuff by staying ahead of the curve that you can do, to use the street things, you know, I think last month I said it's kind of like taking, brushing your teeth, you know, then you don't have to pay for new crowns and stuff in a couple of years. And our streets are very much the same way. There's a lot of things in our community that people want, desire, you know, they like living here, they care about their community, and I think that we can really help our community to stay what people like and what people want. So, you know, I'm thinking half a percent, the existing task, as we saw in this, you know, the thing that kind of keeps our nose barely above water at our current rate. You know, if the economy goes south, which I think is quite possible, a lot of things indicate bubbles around here, even though real estate people don't like to say that, you know, then our nose is going to start slipping below the surface. So I think that's a good argument to go to the three-quarter. You know, is that an argument to go to the 1%? I don't want to try to be greedy. If people in the community really think that there's an argument for that, then, you know, let us know. You know, and in terms of length, I think probably 10 years is prudent. I mean, I think it's good to check in with people, even though, yeah, it's, you know, keeping on renewing taxes every five years, it seems like since there's two and they go back and forth, it seems like there's always a tax measure on the ballot. And people are saying, well, wait, didn't we just do this? And, you know, it's, basically, it's up for a renewal. And, you know, that, there, it is a good thing to an extent, but at the same time, 10 years might be a good length of time.
Is there an opportunity for a private citizen to step in?
No, or treasurer.
With a comment, as treasurer?
Oh, absolutely.
So just noticing on Table A, I think you have it, the spin out of the figures, they're projections based on a half-cent increase or renewal at half a percent. It's, it's Table A.
Page six.
Yeah, I don't, my pages aren't numbered. So it's, yeah, I think it's a staff report, Peter. So if you look at the projections, starting in fiscal year 1718, with the increase just at half a percent, someone earlier, maybe it was Michael, made the point that we start dipping, if you look at that percent of general fund balance, we start dipping below that 25%, which is our goal to keep in reserves across the next few years into the future. So if we were to go with more than half a percent, I think we also could substantiate that with the argument that it's, you know, it's been a prevailing best practice to keep at at least 25% of operating budget, and we would avoid dipping so much below. We'd have, we have to spin the figures, I think, to see what the percents would be.
So in other...
I think that's a good point, because even with it, at least on one year, we're into it more than $100,000, which is kind of a big chunk, and these are preliminary things.
Right.
So that's, that's a good point.
Right.
But, and basically, the point, I stand corrected then, to keep it at a half percent, our nose is not staying above water.
Correct.
We are slipping under the waves.
Just to add to that, just so you know, the projected forecast does make an assumption that certain amount of revenue goes to capital projects. So when you're dipping, you're dipping strictly for, in that case, capital projects. So from our perspective, the quarter cent extra would actually allow you to maintain or do more capital projects, because it's, gas taxes dropped like by $80,000 or something like that, and that's a major funding source, so it's one of those things. Oddly, from perhaps my perspective, is I was just thinking a half cent, because I know everyone's used to it, in the longer term, I'm not opposed to quarter percent, but that's just something, it's oddly, usually staff's the other way around, but we're thinking, hey, we have something everyone's comfortable with, let's just make it longer. So, because the problem for this, as you're all well aware, is it's impossible for you to plan for a five-year forecast, because every five years, you're either going to have to renew your sales tax or renew your special municipal tax. So it's really hard to plan for capital projects.
Just follow up, the gas tax pays for a lot of our road and capital improvements, correct?
Yeah, actually, it doesn't pay for our, it's supposed to, but it doesn't, it no longer pays for it.
But the trend, you know, with all these electric cars, I mean, Tesla has like 500,000 orders for their new electric car. I think as electric cars come onto the road, too, the long-term trend is...
There is no gas.
Gas taxes could, could drop quite a bit.
What did you say the gas tax has dropped by?
He's looking at, Michael's looking it up. I think we were budgeting 160, 165, but I recall at one point it was like 230,000.
So it's dipped about 75, 70,000, something like that, 60,000?
Yeah, and what's that, 13? So in 13, 14, it was over 230,000, actual, what we received.
So it's about 60,000 less.
Is that from gas sold in this town?
No.
Gas tax is a per-kappa distribution. And we've got a double whammy, because the Department of Finance just came out with our new population totals, and we went down. We had a negative, we had a negative, eight, we have eight people less, so we'll get proportionally less sales or gas tax, because that's distributed on a per-kappa basis.
I think to Peter's point, you know, the, so we had this dip of 60,000, and with more electric cars, it's going to dip even more. I mean, the good news, it's good for the environment. Bad news, it's not good for gas tax.
Or, or sales tax, because we get a lot of sales tax from gas sales.
Yeah, right. No, electric vehicles still take their toll on the road.
There's sales tax coming to Fairfax from the amount of gas sold in Fairfax. Yes, and here is something that I've raised on a number of occasions, and I don't know what we can do, but I find it astounding. I find it, I haven't gassed in this town in 10 years, because a mile down the block, I can pay 50 cents less per gallon. And I recall that when we were having the conversation on the closing of the gas station and not reopening the gas station, the now no longer owner of one of the larger gas stations said, oh, no, 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 we'll, I'll be selling my gas at competitive prices, baloney. So I'm, I constantly wonder...
David, what's the difference right now?
50, 40 to 50 cents a gallon.
Really?
Yeah. That's why when you go up to Sir Francis Drake, you see people actually packing up onto Sir Francis Drake to go into that gas station, because it's that cheap.
I always buy my gas here.
So I think a lot of us buy gas here, and I think Fairfax gas is relatively close. But I think the point is, yeah, it is, I've checked that thing, and you can get your credit card skimmed if you're lucky there, too. But, but I think there's a couple of things, is that the point is, the state debt gas tax is going to go down even more, we're going to get more of a hit. If we also think about less people buying gas, for those that do buy in Fairfax, we'll get more of a hit. And when you look at your charts, the, we get quite a lot from, from that kind of thing. So that's more reason for us to be looking at potentially an increase. But Renee, you should probably weigh in.
No, my, my weigh-in, it's fine.
Do you think we should be at four percentage?
I am, I'm right along there with most of us, which is that three-quarters makes good, solid sense to me. I'm, I wouldn't go over 10 years at this point. I think it's a lot to hand to people, and, and I think, actually, to accompany that, I think our, what we really need to do is explain somehow very clearly outside of what goes when we craft the ballot language and go that way, is what does this actually pay for? Because I think that generally, when there's a tax imposed, people don't really get it. Why is Sir Francis Drake in the condition it's in, and how this kind of thing could help to mitigate that? And I think it's going to be our job to really communicate this to the public in a way that makes it palatable, but also makes it seem that their investment is an investment in their town, and not, you know, yes, sometimes, David, you have to pay a little bit more, but you love those folks, and you know what they've been through, and they fixed your car, and one guy's, you know, Tom's worked there for goodness only knows how long, and it feels good to put your money into your town. So, you know...
I disagree with you on that. I think merchants have an obligation to sell a product at a reasonable price, and when they do so, even if it's more, then heaven knows, in a family that seems to eat out 21 meals a day, a week, that we are more than happy to pay for it. But some tididity is, you can drive by those gas stations often and see nobody there. But let me just touch on another, maybe last point, which is, we've made a deal, or our forbearers made a deal, through Prop 13, and now we're living with the consequences of that. So unless we, as Californians, decide that, you know, that's not really something we want, and we want to change it in whole or in part, we're stuck with this funding source. And the only way that that allows us to maintain, as you put it, the Fairfax of Fairfax, is to actually jump through these absurd hoops, to bring in the kind of revenue that, in a sense, doesn't even get us to where we want to be, but just lets us claw and hold on to what we already love and have.
It looks like to me, I was keeping a record of what everybody says, it looks like three-quarter cent sounds good, and 10 years sounds good. And then I think part of what we can maybe talk more about, I think, when we do the budget workshop, is a little bit more, maybe we can think more on what we want to highlight of things that we, you know, some of it's basic police-fire, which was also Measure J, some of it's capital, streets, roads, infrastructure-type things, I think maybe that's stuff we can all think about. At least that's, I'm going to think more about that, I had some preliminary notes to myself, but I think really you have to be able to communicate it.
Yeah, and I think one of the things, yeah, that came out of the whole conversation around the gas station, was David really, and rightly so, challenged the community, who said, no, we don't want this, to come out, talk about how we're going to run, how we're going to deal with the budget, and how we're going to run Measure J. And they did. So I guess this is an appeal to people to please come back, because, you know, for us to do this in a void without that community input is, I mean, it would benefit everyone greatly if people came and shared their, their feelings about this. So whoever's listening out there, when would be the next opportunity for people to sort of come and share this? I think it will help direct us going forward.
Is it the budget workshop?
It sounds like the budget workshop, you want to have an opportunity to talk about this a little more. So that would be May 20? May 20?
Is this something you could put out on Nextdoor again?
Sure. We would probably let people know of the workshop.
Yeah. It is a Saturday, right? It's a Friday.
It's a Friday. I think that's the 20th, right?
Yeah. Okay, so do we have...
Yeah, it is a Friday, it's not a regular council meeting time, it's during the day on Friday.
Okay.
The 20th.
So Garrett, once again, are we where we need to be on this, to take next steps?
Yes, that's great. So before you move to your council reports, do you want to sit back up at the dais or stay here?
No.
I just got an email...
Does she need to close the workshop?
No, you don't.
It's all, it was on the regular agenda.
The only issue is the video feed's not working very well due to the lighting and everything. So if you go up there, you can look better.
Is it okay now, Damian?
Is it better?
It's okay. Wait, he's saying it's okay.
I'm going to take a while.
Oh.
So we're going to move on to council reports and comments, and we're almost there, folks. So do we want to, let's start this time with Peter on the left. We're on my left.
Let's see, so I attended the Marin Clean Energy meeting in Barbara's stead, and it was a fairly momentous meeting. We voted to approve seven more jurisdictions joining Marin Clean Energy, Napa, the city of Napa, Lafayette, Walnut Creek, American Canyon, a few others. And it's a pretty significant landmark, we, that... We, uh, that increased the membership by about fifty-four percent all at once, just showing the demand for, um, uh, clean energy. And this would, just by those many members joining, would have the effect of mitigating, I think it's a hundred and five million tons of CO2 per year, just in the difference between the renewable energy mix that Marin Clean Energy offers versus PG&E. Um, so very, very profound, um, significant, um, milestone. And also, uh, the other good news is that will result in an eight percent reduction of rates overall just because of the economies of scale of expanding that big. So, uh, very exciting development. Um, the other thing is that, um, they announced that Fairfax, uh, came in fourteenth place out of over seven hundred cities for the Cool California contest. So, uh... Fourteen out of seven hundred will get a thousand-dollar grant. And most importantly, we beat Mill Valley. I think they were fifteenth or sixteen-
Go Fairfax.
Didn't we beat all, oh, there was one, one city in Marin that beat us?
Yeah, I forget, it might have been Corrida Madera, um, we'll get them next time. But anyways, uh, uh, very, very exciting developments there. Um, and, uh, the other thing I did, um, and Renee was there, she can talk about it more, but took advantage of the Take Back Day, uh, um, on Saturday and picked up, um, some great homegrown, well, not homegrown, but home-generated compost, uh, which is, was really great. Uh, and great to see the turnout there. Just a reminder, too, to people to, uh, use your green can, use it for kitchen scraps. And a couple, three times a year, you can reap the benefits in some great compost for your garden. So that's about all my reports.
Okay, moving down the line then. Yeah, I guess I got a little bit scrapings at the bottom of that compost barrel. I was reminded by Renee, uh, yesterday, the day before, um, that it was up there, and I'd looked and there was still a little bit left. But, uh, it's, it's a good benefit. Um, anyway, but that's, uh, this is council reports, and, and I think taking the lead from David, I'm gonna list off the meetings that I went to really quickly and then highlight one or two of them. So I met with, um, Public Works and some neighbors in Lansdale Avenue, um, you know, just to try to figure out some solutions there, uh, the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, uh, the Fire Board, uh, the Council of Mayors and, um, council members, uh, the Transportation Authority meeting, uh, the Finance Committee meeting, uh, this, like a subcommittee of this council. I attended on Earth Day a very, um, very interesting project and took a hand in that. And Warren Karlinsig was basically, uh, had put together a great demonstration project, and it's adjacent to the pavilion, Renee was there also. It was adjacent to the pavilion parking lot. And what it looks like right now, you can see these little signs that say, "This is, um..." "Green infrastructure," I think, and, which is not very descriptive. But what it is, is it takes all the runoff from that huge parking lot, which was previously kind of eroding away the hillside and, and running down in the gutter into the creek when it rained. And it basically channels that into a series of holes in the ground, which were, um, six to eight feet long, you know, three or four feet wide, and four feet deep. The bottom, at least a couple of feet, one of them, it's all the way, filled up all the way to the top with gravel, but most of them are filled, uh, two, two and a half feet deep in drain gravel, you know, which is about an inch in diameter. Then some drain cloth put over that, and then good soil put on top. And basically, these are tanks which allows the runoff to just get channeled into this area, and it sinks into the ground. It doesn't go shooting down straight into our creek, which in huge downpours, you know, makes the creeks pulse up and sometimes overflow. But it basically recharges the ground. This is, recharges our groundwater, you know, it's available for trees. Uh, there's plantings in the tops of some of these basins, so, you know, it's basically landscaping. Uh, there's one of them where it happens to be where the gutter runs down, all the way down Bank Street, and at the bottom of that, um, slope there that's kind of behind S and N Auto, and the bottom of the hill by the pavilion, that's where cars park. So, you know, that's not a good place to plant anything. That's where the gravel comes up to within a couple inches of the surface. Then there's the same drain cloth to keep dirt from washing into the gravel, and some sand on top of that. And basically, the water, the rainwater runoff sinks back down into the ground, and so it's, in effect, um, you know, pours, you know, recharging the groundwater instead of just shunting all this water off into the creek. The other thing, um, it's not really a meeting I attended, it is something that I was remiss in doing. And I was looking through the minutes for this, for our previous council meeting, and there was something that was on consent that I wanted pulled but didn't get pulled. And the decision there was like, "Oh, everybody just write down all your comments and send them to the town manager and he'll report back." Well, I did not compose all those thoughts into an email and write it down, and, you know, I mean, I had prepared my notes for the meeting, I was ready to say it then, but I did not come back, you know, days later and then bring it all back up and regurgitate it. So I did not make that report to Garrett. And basically, what this was, was to do with our downtown plan and my various thoughts on that. So I need to go back and look through my notes for that and come, you know, spend an hour or two to write it all up. I would much prefer to do our thinking in public, which is, that's what I think a public meeting is about, is to do our thinking in public so people can hear about it. But that's enough to say about that, so, thanks.
Okay, so I attended the Marin Clean Energy Contracts Ad Hoc Committee meeting. This is where we decide on various power purchase agreements to make that get recommended to the executive committee and then the full board. I attended the Fairfax Climate Action Committee, and something we're working on is working on our, um, key things that we wanna focus on. This year, we've been focusing the last year and a half on Deep Green, getting more people to sign up for Deep Green. We probably will continue that. Uh, but we're also looking at things like working, maybe with Sustainable Fairfax and others, to get our diversion for, um, organic waste, getting it out of the trash and getting it diverted correctly. But I also noticed, um, another big bang for the greenhouse gas emissions buck is to divert paper, stop using so much paper, so I think that's another area I'm gonna recommend. Also, uh, with a few of us, attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members, where we had a Superior, Superior Court Judge speak on Community Court, and also another program by the court to assist people in need. Also, we had a speaker on Effective Communications that gave some pretty good tips. Um, I attended the Community Media Center of Marin Board Meeting. That's the folks who televise for us and other government. And one of the best things I did is I served as a judge for the Margie Burke Speech Tournament this past Saturday, and this is for middle school students from all schools in Marin County. It's a wonderful event. These kids are sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and they are amazing. Their speeches, their ability, their eloquence. And one of, uh, the students that was in one of the rooms I was in was one of the winners for the whole thing. So it's just a wonderful experience. I did it last year and really enjoyed it. And then the other thing I did briefly and saw Renee there was I attended the fundraiser in Perry Park. Mimi Newton, our planning commissioner, uh, worked with the band, The Eleven, to put on a fundraiser. And those monies that they got donated through that fundraiser will be used to offset, uh, funding that we spent to rebuild Perry Park's stage. So it's not gonna pay for it all, but that'll, um, offset some of our expenditures. The band really wanted to do that, and we wanna thank Mimi for all her efforts to put that together. Thanks.
I will never do the Margie Burke thing again. Sitting there, these kids are so extraordinary that to choose between, and among them was just, it, I walked out, I don't think I'd been that bummed in months, because you, you have to select. And yet, I found I would have selected them all. So I, I top my cap to you for doing that. Uh, three things I, very briefly, I wanna talk about. Klaus Park is moving along very nicely. Peter Anderson, who we all cannot praise enough, has come up with a plan. We sat down, we met with Garrett, we went through it all. Garrett identified the remaining challenges that are there, and we will be coming back to the Measure A Committee, to, um, first report on funds spent, funds remaining, and, um, I believe there'll be a, uh, a bit of funds that, that need to be acquired to complete, um, the project and actually bring a park back from the dead. So, um, I, I wanna thank Mark a lot for his assistance, Garrett for his oversight, but Peter and that community really stepping up. And in fact, they've all gotten into the spirit of, although we did put down some ground cover, um, some, uh, very adventurous little sprouts of ivy, insist upon making their presence known, and folks go out there, and they're actually spending ten, fifteen minutes just walk around, pluck a few out of there. I think within a year or two, um, not even a problem. The second is, um, a project, a little project on the corner, a corner of Pastorian, Sir Francis Drake, with the, again, um, we're, we're, we're just extremely fortunate to have both Melanie and Shelby, um, came in on this and have, uh, designed, uh, a project that will be, uh, coming forward in the next couple of weeks. And, uh, well, it's such an abominably ugly corner, any improvement would be remarkable. But what Shelby and Melanie are suggesting, um, is really going to enhance that spot exponentially. And finally, I wanna spend a few minutes on the Flood Zone Nine. David and Kiki were here earlier talking about the chambers position. Uh, I was with them for about a half an hour and, um, you know, discussed at least my perspective on it, and I think, I think that's reflected in David and Kiki's, um, thoughts today. Congressman Huffman was also in town a week or so ago. And I think it's very important to remember that when we talk about, uh, the Flood Zone Nine situation, there's the, let's just say, the Ross Bridge, Lagunitas Road Bridge to the bay. Corps of Engineers has much jurisdiction there and funding. Everything above that, absolutely no Corps participation at all. So he was there to talk about the funding that's, I believe, being provided and is getting allocated, um, from the federal government, and, and what improvements are gonna be made down there, not us, them. Um, and Corps participation, um, county staff, and then also consultants were there as well, and it was extremely well-attended. Finally, there was, um, the regular meeting of Flood Zone Nine a couple of weeks ago. And I think the critical thing that came out of it is, and, and, and I'm glad you brought up the thing about Warren, because he's, he's part of this conversation of the, uh, low-impact development. And so I'm gonna actually ask that all of you, if you could schedule it, um, on the nineteenth of June, I would love for you all to be there, uh, for the next regularly scheduled Flood Zone Nine meeting, because we are going to discuss the concepts of what you can accomplish with the good stuff that comes out of the green, rain barrels and, and, um, swales and all those things. But the conversation is going to be about what percentage can we assume can be taken up by this? And that is why the conversation on detention basins there, because I think you're gonna come back and you're gonna see, it can do some, but not enough. And that's why you work them in tandem. And the more green, the smaller the detention basin. The more you get sunny side, the smaller gets Lefty Gomez. So it's that participatory design concept that Gary Roth was talking about a couple of months ago. And it's that participatory side that helps us craft and scale all of these projects. But it's important, and I really think it's important for all of us on the council, um, to actually hear and be able to ask questions of the experts.
Are you sure that's the day? Because I think the ninth, June nineteenth is a Sunday, and on the way to that.
Let's see. Could be the twenty-ninth, let me take a quick look. Ye, uh, sorry, you're right, um, Ju, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-first. Tuesday, the twenty-first. The twenty-first, and I know you're all concerned that that might overlap with the NBA playoffs in the final round, and I can assure you that we have crunched the dates and it has not. So, thank you all in advance for calendaring that.
All right, thank you, David. So, um, I, I just, I just wanted to, uh, report out about the Take Back Day. So the Take Back Day is a wonderful service that was actually added to the Resource Recovery Contract by, crafted so, so heartily by Larry and Pam in agreement with Marin Sanitary, that once a year, we would have a Take Back Day that would come and, for all Fairfax residents, would take our e-waste and shred our documents. And, um, uh, we since have partnered with the DEA via the Fairfax Police to take back prescription drugs. Um, and then we bring the compost, so it's a full-service, comprehensive, take-back-and-take-away day. Um, we collected a hundred and forty-eight pounds of, uh, prescription medication that would otherwise either be in the creek or, uh, in our, you know, water supply or in our children's or our own, um, bodies and minds. So we've got that going, and then we collected four thousand, four hundred and fifty pounds of e-waste. A hundred and twenty cars came through to deliver their e-waste, and two thousand, four hundred and forty-four pounds of documents were shredded. More participation than ever. So, uh, yeah, thank everybody for participating. I went to all the regular things that I would normally go to and did the Lansdale, uh, walkabout to look at different ways that we might deal with the speeding and the sharing of the roadway by bikes and cars and pedestrians and the poor residents of that road that can barely step outside their front doors, being that that's a main arterial that parallels, um, center there. So coming up with some interesting solutions, working with David Parisi going forward on that. The Green Infrastructure Work Day in the Pavilion Parking Lot was very, was, was very key, and it was a great way to look at how small projects can actually be incredibly effective. Um, and yes, not the, the, the whole shebang. So, um, but Warren Karlinsig, thank you so much. I'm just gonna put that out there for coming in. He volunteered, he organized it. Tim Ezekiel came out with his truck. Public Works and the town did all kinds of heavy digging and lifting and brought some supplies, and it was an all-volunteer, all-free, totally mitigate the flash flooding off the Pavilion Parking Lot kind of day. Um, what I really wanted to tell you all about for two minutes is the ABAG situation. Um, I, being the representative from Fairfax and the delegate at the General Assembly representing us, spent the day over at, uh, what is, what is and soon not to be the ABAG MTC Central over in Oakland. And I, it was the General Assembly. So at the General Assembly, um, the delegates come together and there are things that we learn about and hear about. And this General Assembly was the best-attended General Assembly ever in the history of ABAG. Um, and it's because there are scenarios and there are options on the table that have to do with the merging of MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transportation, uh, Commission, and ABAG, which is our Association of, of Bay Area Governments. There are seven scenarios at this point. There is a scenario which is, in my mind and in most of the delegates who stood very vociferously speaking for, uh, one of the options, which is option number four, has to do with the merger being a new, uh, a new organization created with ABAG intact as the land use planners and MTC intact as the transportation planners, but under one organization. Going forward, Pat Eklund from Nevada crafted a, um, a letter which needed to be signed by fifteen cities and three counties in order to call for a second General Assembly, which has now been scheduled for May nineteenth, because at the first assembly, ABAG did not, and MTC did not present us with an explanation of the different options, and there was no opportunity to, to, uh, to voice or to vote on anything. So on May nineteenth, we will reconvene, um, and it will be an opportunity, what's being asked for is a vote on the options, um, and, um, an opportunity to, um, to hear all of the details of these seven- for is a vote on the options and an opportunity to hear all of the details of these seven potential scenarios. So it gets very complicated. Where it's going is toward a merger, and really, it's about how the cities can maintain a voice at the table as we look at the merging of the land use planning with the transportation planning and dealing with SB 375 and how we're going to maintain our local control, but do the right thing by the planet. It's complicated. So I hope that gave you just a little bit of an update. I will be there on May 19th, so have no fear. Peter, if you'd like to join me as my alternate, that would be great. And I... There's other things, but I think that was the most important thing.
Can I ask one clarifying question about that?
Yeah.
I know that Pat Eklund brings up one of the major issues with the ABAG to MTC merger in that MTC has six voting members and ABAG has a representative from each county and city. What about representation in this new structure?
That's the whole thing. Is that if there's, if option number four goes forward, it is the one that will allow us to restructure governance, and the cities will have more of a voice, and we won't just be the Association of Bay Area Governments that have been subsumed by the larger state, non-union, sort of large monster state agency. So, yes, that allows more local representation, and I think it's a fair way to move forward in that we won't lose local control, but we're not standing our ground, and we're actually going to become stronger as a Council of Governments. And regionally, I think we start to understand the importance of looking regionally when we're dealing with our air, when we're dealing with our water. And I think this could have a good outcome. I think it'll be a long journey, though. So I think we have reached the end. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Town Manager Report?
Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. We have a town manager sitting right here. Garrett, I apologize. Could you give us your report?
Okay. Actually, I was asked to report on two things. One is PG&E's LED light program. You may recall, we did have that discussion last year in November. Originally, we thought we'd come back to you in January. PG&E does apologize for delays. I did ask them a series of questions, maybe some of that was some of the delay, but it wouldn't have caused this long of a delay. Preliminary indications, looks like it's more cost-effective to go through their program. So I have been insured, promised by PG&E that we will have something to you in June for approval. With approval in June, then what happens is it's a four-to-six-week lead time just to get the lights, and then after that, they'd be installed. So you're looking at sometime in July. One of the things we did ask is if the lights in downtown that are going to be retrofitted can be the same retrofit kit as we did for the previous lights. They indicated yes, but technically, I guess what part of the delay was they're trying to figure out how they can warranty it the same way as the other lights. But that being said, I think we're working most of the things out, and hopefully I'll come back to you, well, it will come back to you in June. The other thing I was asked to report back was the timing for the conversion of the interim bike rack into a permanent bike rack. And I will say, we've been a little behind on that. What I've done is I have spoken to Perici Transportation Consultants. I have a handbook now on bike corrals and bike racks per industry standards. I just have a few questions for David Perici. And again, in June, I'll report back to you on what we're actually going to plan to do for the, for the corner, just so you could see it. It's not going to be very expensive, but I think I should run the plan by you.
So I wondered if you could run, does that mean you're going to run the design by us as well?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Run the plan by you.
It's right there, smack in the middle of town. I would love to do something very interesting and creative.
I don't know if it's going to be very interesting or creative, going off the handbook.
I know that David has some very creative designs.
He does. But if it's based on the handbook, well, put it this way, maybe what we come up with seems creative, but it seems like it's in the handbook.
All right. Well, we could talk more about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
As an aside, on your earlier item on the LED streetlights, I can't recall her name. She made a presentation to us about a year and a half, two years ago, on LED lights is before we went with the PG&E program. And she, I don't remember her name, but I ran into her at a completely different function. And she goes, "Oh yeah, I remember..." She was, she reminded me that she had made the presentation to us and said that actually things have changed, and actually, there's new sources of LED lighting. I don't know if we're committed to PG&E, but some of them run at a third the cost of what PG&E is doing stuff on. So I just thought I'd mention that, and we can meet later about it, and I'll pull up the information. Okay? That seems like enough savings that we should get on the radar if we're not committed to that.
We could do that. I think there's a lot of talk discussions because PG&E has the financing program. It's a 10-year financing program, doesn't cost us anything. So, but you get the rebates.
Yeah, so it's good.
So we, well, we can talk offline.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're going to adjourn, and tonight, we'll be adjourning for, in memory and honoring three, three different individuals. Just several weeks ago, we lost Jory Prum. And Jory, Jory was a very active and very beloved character, a character of characters in the town of Fairfax, and he is deeply missed and will be. And we're very sorry for his loss. And the second person is our chief, our dear chief, Morin's mother, Diana Morin, who passed away last week. So we send our love to the family, and I'm very sorry for their loss. And the third person is not a Fairfax, was not a Fairfax local or resident, but might well have, might as well have been, and his name was Daniel Barrigan. And Daniel Barrigan, as most people may know, but I didn't, I'm ashamed to say, I'm not too young, an international peace activist and also Jesuit priest. And I know that there are many people that will walk around with memory and inspiration from him forever. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion.
Okay. And seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. All those who would like to stay? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.